Really? What else do you want?
You're not gonna make it, you look tired. Huh? You look tired. It's one of those days, I guess. I get it.
Is that right, Part 3? Can you hear me? Yep. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have everybody here, so we have a full quorum. I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the visual At this point, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for our fallen officer at the Capitol last week and a peaceful transition coming up here on the 20th of January. So if I can have just a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, public participation close to in-person participation, participation via written comments. This portion of the meeting is to allow the public to inform the board regarding their concerns. During the Board of Select meetings, close to in-person public participation, persons interested in addressing the board shall do so by submitting written written comments to the Town Manager no later than noon on the day of the board meeting. Comments received will be distributed to the board and read out loud. Please, be advised that the individuals addressing concerns will be placed on the board's next regular meeting agenda unless the issue addressed is one of an emergency nature. The chairperson or acting chairperson will use his or her discretion as to whether action on this particular issue should be taken at this meeting. Items regarding personnel issues or town employees cannot be discussed in open session. Board meetings can be viewed less live by accessing excuse me, by accessing the link on the Town's website at www.townofmatawaska.com or www.stjohnvalley.live. Do we have any?
Yes, so you provided you written comments from two people, Lori Bouchard at the bakery meeting and Paul Seer.
Okay.
You provided those comments. And one of you guys can read that out loud.
Yep, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take care of Lori here. And for Paul, I think Lori will help us out. So Lori Bouchard wrote to the, to the, to the board. Actually, the letters addressed to the Town Manager. The property, the personal property tax assessment assessments are being made on closed business illegally. Per statute, personal property taxes are assessed on business property and used on April 1. The current tax bill for businesses, is there be no business property as of April 1, 2020. Apparently, our Town Manager, as this letter reads, is illegally assessed first. Businesses who do not exist on April 1, 2020 would not have a legal tax bill due for the tax year. I would hope that the board and the Town Manager would follow the law and remove the bill, the bill and liability that I hope was simply issued and pursued in error. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter, and I'm looking forward to your response. So this letter was, was written and sent, one was sent to the Town Manager, addressed to the Town Manager. The second letter is the same, sent just a few minutes later. But this one is sent to the Town. And so, we're all looking for an explanation of why we have two letters here. One, addressing the Town Manager directly is the issue here, and the other one that's sent to the board addresses it directly to the Town. Do we have any kind of explanation? I'm assuming that this letter pertains to somebody on the board here.
Well, why does it matter when or why we have to or not just respond? I mean...
Do we have any discussions about these letters? Mr. Picard, do we have anything here that is relevant that we need to discuss more than what we just brought up?
If you, if you want to decide to talk about the subject, this, you know, it's up to the new as the board chair if you want to address this now or at a later meeting as, as the public participation statement suggests.
I understand, yes, correct. I'm sorry to
I think it's relevant.
I'm sorry to have forgotten that. So, so we're looking for an action item here that this would brought up, we brought up on the next, next meeting?
No, Mr. Chair.
It's discussed in Article 8.
It's, yeah, of course, things
All right, so why, why would we have not just brought this up on Article 8 instead of doing this either?
Because it's public, because it's public comment, public participation, that's why.
So now, do we want to discuss this any further tonight under Article 8? As we face Article 8?
Thank you.
Very well.
Do you have another one there? You asked me to read it, do you still want me to read it or are you good?
Um, yep, no, go ahead, if you can, this is
You're talking and stuff?
No, I'm, I'm okay. Go ahead, though.
Public participation, participation comments by Paul Seer, January 12, 2021. I wish to go on record as opposing the decision to close in-person public participation comments for this meeting or any future meeting. I also oppose the closing of the meetings to the public. There are avenues to allow the public to participate live via social and electronic media and a system to allow for that should be set up as soon as possible. I also would like to state that I believe the Agenda Articles 10, 11, and 14 do not meet statutory criteria for discussion in executive session. Specifically, none of the articles, and I quote from the statutes, indicate the precise nature of the business of the executive session. I will close my comments by reading the following from the main revised statutes. 403 meetings to be open to public recorded meetings. Number one, proceedings open to public, except as otherwise provided by statute or by Section 405. All public proceedings must be open to the public and any person must be permitted to attend a public proceeding. 405 dot four, motion contents. A motion to go into executive session must indicate the precise nature of the business of the executive session and include a citation of one or more sources of statutory or other authority that permits an executive session for that business. 405 dot six, permitted deliberation. Deliberations on only the following matters may be conducted during an executive session. A, discussion or consideration of the employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disappointing resignation, or dismissal of an individual or group of public officials, appointees, or employees of the body or agency, or the investigation or hearing of charges or complaints against a person or persons subject to the following conditions. E, consultations between a body or agency and its attorney concerning the legal rights and duties of the body or agency, pending or contemplated litigation, settlement offers and matters where the duties of the public bodies or agencies counsel to the attorney's client pursuant to the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflict with this subchapter or where premature or general public knowledge would clearly place the state, municipality, or other public agency or person at a substantial disadvantage. And this, he didn't send this. Do I, I don't need to read all this?
So he's, he's certainly questioning here some of the articles on this agenda.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I did send a, and I informed you that in your Title 1, Chapter 13 subsection to his, uh, he already got legal correspondence on, on that that I forwarded to you just moments ago.
But I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on the first option about public participation, even through other means. Unfortunately, with the, the method that live streaming is with the internet and because there is there's anywhere from a 30 seconds to a two-minute delay between what the person sees at home and what we're, what we're talking about here. So to try to do a two-way public participation is, one of the reasons we don't do it is because of that, that huge delay. By the time they participate in what we're talking about currently, we've already moved on from that thing. So that's why the best process we've put in place is to contact the Town Office ahead of time for the information.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yep.
The agenda for tonight's meeting is very long. It will be impossible to conduct all the matters and business at hand. Those responsible to put together the agenda and to call for meetings is needed. Select person Laura, Lori Guingo addressed this in the past with majority board support. But the responsible parties have not followed through. But we need increased frequency of meetings.
Are you bringing up another item on, on, on?
No, I, I just want to make the chairman and the Town Manager aware that we are in need of more frequent meetings. And at this point, we'll bring right up people. We have never seen in excess of 20 people. With the facilities that this town owns, the Matawaska High School Gymnasium, buildings of that sort, there's no reason why we can't hold public meetings practicing safety and COVID protocol with the social distancing. We do have ample room in some of our buildings to carry out our meetings and to make them available to the public.
Comment taken. Anything else? Do we need to act on this or do we just put this on for next, the next meeting or do we, do we?
On the next agenda.
Next agenda, okay. So we leave that for the next agenda. Okay. As discussed with our board members prior to the meeting, I'd like to move Article 14.
Fine, that's only public participation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you did say that, yes. Go ahead.
So I'd just like to address some of the items that were brought up by the public with the live streamings that have been done. There's a rumor going around about St. John Valley Live and how the live streaming is being conducted. St. John Valley Live donates 100% of their time for school board meetings, school sporting events, town meetings, town board meetings, and anything related to public service. We've been doing this since early March and we haven't collected a penny from any of these municipalities. We do this out of great, you know, concern for the public to ensure that they stay informed. Luckily, we do have some donors who have helped to keep this service alive and to help keep this service going. So I'd like to thank those donors and just let everybody understand that it's not taxpayer money that, that processes these. Also, during our last board meeting, we had something with a economic development plan that we put in place that my company, Simple Computers 101, is being involved in. Simple Computers 101 has been doing business with the town for well over 15 years now and has done an amazing amount of work for the town. We actually did do some research on prices for the project that we were working on. The lowest bid that we received or that we saw by doing these price comparisons was $15,000. And the developer who works for my company, Simple Computers 101, had agreed to do it out of his own time for less than $5,000. So there were some rumors that a $5,000 check was cut to St. John Valley Live for the development work, which I just wanted to clear up with the public is not true. And that the $5,000 limit we set was just a ceiling that we would spend no more than $5,000 for this developer. So I wanted to make sure that those items were cleared up and that, you know, people understood how these live streams are being done.
Anything else under public participation?
Yes.
Yep, Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chairman, are these two gentlemen on the screen waiting for us? Article 14?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, if, if they are, if it's permissible, Mr. Chairman, these men go for a lot more money than I do, so I would rather, if, if it's permissible, to postpone the further public participation
Yep.
and address these men so they can get on with whatever they need to do.
So is the board in favor of doing that? We'll skip Article 1 and 2 at this point and go right to Article 14. We'll come back to those in a minute.
Come back to public participation, please, because I, I have other, other
Does it, can it fall under other business?
Article 4.
Yep.
Let me just one second, please.
Did you guys hear us?
Yep.
Yes, it can be done under other business.
All right, so Article 14. Yep, I'm looking for a motion. Go into executive session for 1 M R S A subtitle 4056E. I have a motion.
I move to go into executive session under 1 M R S A section 4056E to consult legal counsel about pending declaratory judgment action between the Town and Twin Rivers Paper Company.
Do we have a second?
How second?
All in favor? As of, as of, what time is it?
So we will pause the live stream real quick and we'll be back at 5:51.
So we're into executive session as of 5:51 PM.
I think I'm gonna, uh...
I need a motion to come out of executive. Do I need a motion to come out of executive?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Can't we're live?
So we're coming out of executive session, I need a motion.
A motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
With no action, no action.
All in favor? Close. We have come out of executive session. At six thirty-three. Since we have Mr. Lewis Cousins still on with us, I'd like to move directly on to Article Eight. If that's okay with the rest of the board.
Have a request of executive action.
It's a law is no action.
Right, the motion to come out of the executive.
I have a motion. Uh, Jason, I'm sorry. It's because you told me to. That's why, sorry.
I told you what to do.
The ice cream was like kicking in there.
And that was at, let me see. Six thirty?
Yeah, I clocked it at six thirty-three. Okay, so again, because we do have Mr. Lewis Cousins with us here this evening. If you don't mind, I know we're skipping around on the, on the articles here, but I'd like to move on to Article Eight. We have no objections. So Article Eight. Consider an application for abatement of property taxes for personal property account number two four eight. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I think Dan wants to start the discussion.
Dan, yep. By me.
Yep.
So that Mr. Cousins can see me.
Yep, go ahead.
You see me now, Mr. Cousins?
Hey, sir, thank you. Yep.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening.
According to the MMA manual, the person that's bringing this to the board, I apologize that this involves a selectmen tonight, but the MMA manual says that I'm to rise to my feet to address the board, tell them who I am and what I'm here for. My name is Daniel Daigle. And the nature of my business to the board here tonight. I hereby refuse to acknowledge or accept this personal property tax bill. I would like to request from this board, when they take action on this, to declare this personal property tax bill to be null and void based on the information that I am going to present. I would like to point out that we have a town employee. And again, the MMA manual forbids that we mention the name of the position. That is the explicit reason that I don't. We have a town employee that relentlessly pursued this matter with vigor when he had absolutely no jurisdiction over this matter and was clearly told that he was blatantly in error but chose to continue his downward wrong path.
You know, Mr. Daigle, we are, we are discussing your abatement here, not some.
Yes, we are. Mr. Chairman, I am presenting my evidence. And, and according to the MMA manual, I am to present my case without interruption. Without interruption.
I don't know how you can consider that to be evidence. That is only what you believe.
Would you let me get through my discourse, please? To present the evidence. You have no choice, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, that I don't have one of these for you, but I'm positive that you have all this information right on your desk.
Can I ask a question, Dan?
Yes.
Can we, just to Doug's point, can we discuss like the facts of the abatement, the date and all of that?
This is it, this is what.
And then the stuff about the employee that you're upset with will take up during the executive session part? Could we stick to, let's stick to the business and the facts of the abatement?
Yes.
And then the stuff you're mad about, let's deal with that.
I'm not mad.
Let's, let's deal with the personnel stuff in.
If I get mad, you'll know it.
In the personnel part.
If I get mad, you'll know it.
Was that the point you were trying to make?
Yes, absolutely. Certainly still looking for it.
Okay, in the little packet that I have prepared for you. This here is all from Maine Statute that I'm sure Mr. Lewis Cousins is well aware of. It describes what personal property, the definition, excuse me, definition of personal property is when it comes to taxation. The second sheet, I hope, says page one on mine. I hope you're, you got page one there?
Yes.
I got all messed up stapling these together the other night. I'm gonna, should have the grandkids do that for me. Here we read in the middle of that page, any application would be placed on the Board of Selectment assessor's agenda as Mr. Cousins pointed out to us a while ago that here in the town of Madawaska under the form of government that we are, the Board of Selectmen are the tax assessors. As we go on, it says, as the assessors are the only town officials with authority to consider the abatement application. But I am not accepting an abatement application based on the following, as we continue. Again, from Maine Statute. Businesses are required to provide the assessor with a full and accurate list of personal property assets located in that town as of April first.
Was that followed?
Pardon?
Was that, was that followed? Was it, was this article that you are reading, did you follow that article?
My brain isn't quite as smart as yours, Mr. Chair. I would ask that you don't interrupt my, my.
Well, I mean, it's, it's just a simple, I mean, if you read it, it's just a simple two lines. And it just, I'm just asking you, did you follow that, that prerequisite?
I sure did.
You did?
I did. I did.
And you're gonna be able to explain that?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Following page, are you all on page six? Number six? Town of Madawaska government bill. Okay. Again, in the middle of the page. As per state law, the ownership and valuation of all real and personal property subject to taxation shall be fixed as of, Mr. Cousin? April one, correct? Good, glad we agree so far. If you flip the page, I believe you should have page number seven. You all on board? This is a, excuse me, this is a screenshot of Governor Mills' mandate. Again, I don't know if Mr. Cousins knows the type of business that I was in. I had a lodging business known as The Other Maine Cabins here in Madawaska, Maine. On March twenty-four, this is the executive order from Janet Mills restricting all the lodging and so forth. So at that point, we, we had three weeks beyond this date scheduled reservations in our camps for snowmobilers where we had to send back money to people that had made reservations to be in our cabins for, for the following three weeks, clear to April sixteenth. So as March, as of March twenty-four, being the obedient citizens that we are to Janet Mills, we decided to obey her orders and shut down our lodging facility. The very, very last page, number eight. This is just a phone photo shot. This is Maine revenue sales tax where we would pay nine percent Maine lodging tax for our cabin rental business. And we were, our schedule had been recently changed to a quarterly schedule to make our payments to the state, the nine percent Maine lodging tax. If you look in the upper right-hand corner of my first quarter, there's a, there, there's a line there, out of business. You see that checked off? Date closed. Remember that the governor's order to restrict lodging was on March twenty-four. The closer date of The Other Maine Cabins is March twenty-five, the following date. Therefore, as of April first, The Other Maine Cabins. as of April first, The Other Maine Cabins did not exist. I guess the, the remaining portion of this since select person, Laurie asked me to try to separate the, uh, two issues here. I believe you want to deal firstly with the, the personal property tax only.
Yeah, let's deal with the dates, the facts, the four, let's decide this and then you can deal with your personnel stuff.
Okay, alright, okay. Okay, if, uh, if I may, I do have one little segment here that I believe would be most important for, for Mr. Cousins to, uh, to be in on. You guys are gonna mess up my program here. All right, uh, Mr. Cousins, this, this is the letter, this is the email that you received from Mr. Gary Peekard. Do you recall that letter?
I've gotten a few, but is it your?
Oh, a few. I only got one. You're a lucky man.
Is it your application for abatement?
I'm not, I'm not looking for an abatement. I'm looking to make that bill null and void because my property is not taxable on April first. We were out of business. Now, now, okay. Can I, can I explain? I had here just, allow me if you please. I have scribbled here that the email sent to Mr. Louis Cousins forwards erroneous and falsely represented the details of the transactions between the Dagels and the buyer of The Other Maine Cabins, Karen Thompson. Again, I would have liked to have carried this out sequentially. But in the letter, in the letter that Mr. Gary Peekard sends to the tax assessor, are you a state tax assessor? What's your title?
Uh, you're just a tax assessor. Can you tell me the date of that email?
January sixth. Shall I wait for you?
I have, and what I have is the application for abatement of property taxes.
Okay. As I continue, as I continue, the email. Before I get myself into trouble, Laurie, would you bear?
Can, do, can I, do I want to help you?
Well, well, I just need to verify the, yeah. Again, you know that I'm not too savvy with these email things. Did this email come from town manager Gary Peekard to Mr. Cousins?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would like to tell you something, though. This email was sent before the actual application.
Okay.
So the date that he represents to Louis as July is the sale date. And afterwards, you gave the application which indicated the March date, which is the point you need to make to Louis.
Okay, well, well, the point I need to make right now. I ask you to all listen and listen carefully. Are you listening carefully? Mr. Dagel no longer runs the business. And the personal property furnishings was conveyed with the real estate. I forgot it home on my desk, but that's all right. I can produce it at a later date. But there are two selectmen present here tonight that did see the purchase and sale agreement from attorney Bob Belfler as to what was agreed upon between the Dagels and Ms. Karen Thompson at the sale of the camps. There were a select few items that are in the purchase and sale agreement from Bob Belfler with Mrs. Thompson that specify a select few items that are being sold to Ms. Thompson for an undisclosed amount of money. Now, what I would like to know is how Mr. Peekard can tell this gentleman, try to steer this man to come up with an answer to his likings by misleading you, sir, by telling you that the personal property furnishings were conveyed with the real estate. There is no way that Mr. Peekard could have known that. Would you like one? I apologize for the poor photo quality, but that's all right. It's just so that you can see it with your own two eyes. In the first photo, we have a large taxidermy specimen, large moose head that comes out of the Moose Chateau, our larger cabin. You can clearly see that this moose head is stored in a bedroom. This would be in my youngest daughter's bedroom in our personal house, because we had no place else.
You know, Mr. Dagel, if I can ask?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you are gonna see the evidence. You asked.
I am, I, I am only asking you that this is what you're presenting for evidence, so we can see it for ourselves. Is this what you're saying? This is evidence? Are you telling us?
Mr. Chair, I am telling you that the contents of the cabins was not in the cabins on April first. That's why.
And this is your proof. This is what we're gonna use. I don't need you to go through every item here.
We are gonna go through every item.
We don't need to.
We are going to.
No, we're not.
Yes, we are.
Why would you want to present every single item here as we can see them already? We see them. We don't, we don't need to discuss these.
No. Vice Chair, some input, please.
There's no reason here, Mr. Dagel, for you.
There is reason. Mr. Peekard, Mr. Peekard is saying
Why?
that the personal property was conveyed with the camps, which is.
I understand that.
Which is a flagrant lie.
I understand that, but this is what you're giving us for evidence, so we have it. We don't need to go through every item.
No, no. No. At the presentation so that this board can make a clear assessment and a clear decision as to where this is going. So you are going to view them, Mr. Chairman. Against your will. The next photo is all of the furnishings, all of the linens, all the blankets, all of the bedding stored in, in another bedroom in my personal house. The next one is another bed that's in a third bedroom.
We need to go faster than that. Please, go.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Could, could you ask us, okay, your point is that all of these things were not in the cabins anymore.
Correct.
You shared that with me.
I sure did.
I believed you. I have no reason not to believe you.
Okay.
Why don't you ask us first if we believe that before you make us look at every picture of your house?
Simply because Mr. Chair asked me fifteen minutes ago if I had evidence, and I do have evidence, and you now have it in your hands, and you don't want to look at it.
No, I, I don't, I don't need to, I need to look at it.
That's not what we said. We said we're gonna look at it.
That's what you're saying now. You're telling me you don't want to go through these?
That's not. I'm so watching the other my own.
I see the other my own. You've got your earplugs on, you've got your goggles on.
I can look at this on my own, Dan. I don't need you to go through every photo.
Okay, well, do you see clearly that Mr. Peekard lied to Mr. Cousin? Do you see that?
Do you see this, do you see this in here?
Pardon?
Do you see that comment in here? Do you see that there's any, what you're showing us here? Is that what you're showing us? That he lied?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
So why?
It says here, this is the email. Mr. Dagel no longer runs the business. The personal property furnishings was conveyed with the real estate. That is a flagrant lie to mislead that gentleman right there. That's what that is.
Mr. Dagel, I look at this and it, it's a picture. It's only a picture. It shows me nothing more in time, in date. It just shows me a picture that you took of these items at whatever time was convenient for you. I do not see anything here other than pictures. I understand that these are still your pictures and they are still your property, but here, looking at this evidence, this shows me very, very little, other than the fact that you took pictures.
And do you believe this? What a show. The point of this matter is, Mr. Chair, that that man lied. He lied, and by advice of my attorney, Mr. Bob Belfler, not to open publicly the purchase and sales agreement. But if we need to, if push comes to shove, we will open the purchase and sale agreement saying that all furnishes, all furnishings are to be removed for the exception of bang, bang, bang for a fixed price of bang, bang, bang. It's in the purchase and sale agreement, which is a legal document prepared by Robert Belfler, who is meticulous when it comes to these matters. My point is that man lied. He had no jurisdiction over that. He lied to that man to try to get an answer that he wanted to try to further sink me. So that's all I have pertaining to declaring this tax bill to be null and void on the basis that The Other Maine Cabin was closed on March twenty-five, officially documented with the state of Maine, out of business for good, never to return, not taxable on April first, because the places had been vacated. End of story. This board is now presented to take a decision as to what they're gonna do with this bill.
Before I ask for Mr. Peekard's input into this issue, does any board member here have anything that they want to add to this, this concern?
I mean, if there's a lot of evidence in front of us, there's a lot of information and regardless of how or what information was conveyed, I do agree that, okay, so the pictures show taking his word for it, maybe the items were removed on before April first. So that's something, it's a maybe. Again, great documentation, but there's no dates or timestamps on the picture, so it's hard to understand for sure. Doing my research myself, uh, I do have the governor's executive orders in front of me. And it wasn't until April third executive order, uh, when it established quarantine restrictions on travelers entering Maine. Lodging establishments were prohibited from accepting new reservations, but they weren't restricted from continuing their existing reservations, uh, with the exception of acceptable workers such as healthcare workers and vulnerable populations. So that kind of shows that I, I, I do believe you were closed on April first, but you weren't forced by the governor to be closed on April first.
We were not forced, but we.
Also, I'm just clearing.
No, but I can all see on, on the, on, on our document that we sent back to the state revenue service where they say effective date of closure, effective date of closure
Right.
for The Other Maine Cabins registered with the state of Maine.
Right.
March twenty-five, two thousand one.
And, and I agree, and I'm not, I'm not debating that. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding all the information in front of you.
Okay.
That.
You're doing well. Continue.
Which is critical. So I have run many businesses in town here as well myself. Some taxed differently than others because of how they were formed. And from what I understand here, and maybe Lewis can, can better understand me uh, or better aid me with this, there is a document that needs to be submitted to the town of Madawaska themselves when you do change what items you have as far as the personal property. What's the number of, or the name of that document?
Seven oh six A.
Seven oh six A, okay. And that's what it is here, Maine Statute Title thirty-six, seven oh six A. Places the obligation on the taxpayer for providing true and perfect list of all assets owned each April first. So do you have documentation that shows that that document was submitted to the town?
Mr. Cousin, would that be the, would that be the original document uh, that was sent to me uh, to list the personal property that was to be the contents of these cabins?
That would be the document sent to you early this year, twenty twenty, I should say.
Okay.
In that same request, yes.
Uh, from day one, our cabins, nothing ever changed in our cabins. We never deleted, we never added, we never subtracted, uh, same. I, 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 I sent, I sent the document in, uh, no changes.
So I do say that in year twenty twenty, when you received that request from the town of Madawaska, that you did return it in twenty twenty?
I cannot tell you for certainty. I really don't know. I really, I'm not a bookkeeper. I'm a builder.
For the record, there's no record of it happening now.
Okay.
Jason, are you, are you continuing on or?
I'm just making sure that I have all my questions. I just wanted to make sure that all, all people followed and see what was missing, so. I think that's all I have for now, but.
All right. Uh, Mr. Cousins, is there anything else that you wanna elaborate on here on this case? Do you have any thoughts here that you can share with us?
Well, if Mr. Dagel is done with his presentation, uh, he does get to go first and then, uh, you know, we usually think the, the tale is, I did prepare some information for, uh, Gary. Uh, I'm not sure if that's been given to you all.
Yes, yes, it has been distributed.
Yeah, so the letter with the heading of Rushee Regional Assessing Office is my full instantly testimony that I would say out loud. If you'd like me to read it, I can. If you want to read it yourself. Uh, my, uh, some, some, my wisdom facts of finding the inclusion. And you do have the ultimate authority, as, as the attorney said earlier, uh, I'll be imaging you are the assessors. I've, I've given my consent and what my decision would be.
Would it be fair for me to ask you, Mr. Cousin? Your opinion, well, opinion, not, not opinion as you would know it in your, in your profession, uh, but your own personal opinion? In your personal opinion, if the business was closed on April first, is the personal property taxable? A yes or a no, please?
Yes or no? Yes, it's taxable.
Why would it be taxable?
Because it's still there.
No, it, it was not.
Well, and now there's something that you maybe have, you may have to prove. We asked for a list based on what was in place April one. We got nothing back. You're now telling us not only was the business closed, but the goods or the assets were removed. We don't, I don't, nothing in the record gave us that. For application for abatement, did not mention anything of that. In fact, it did say that the business was closed. And you were basing your request based on the fact that perhaps a closed business doesn't pay personal property tax. That'd be correct.
So I do.
But the real sticker is that there was no return made. You were obligated by that request from the town back in the spring um, to submit that list again this year, twenty twenty. It's each year and it's a true and perfect list that what the law calls for. And that list did not come, and that does limit your ability to apply for abatement. And, and you are applying for abatement even though you're asking the bill to be null and void. It's truly an abatement of tax.
So my question is, uh, is it too late for him to now submit that document? Or does he have an option to do that now?
He does, absolutely. And that is part of the abatement law, is that if he wants to file for an abatement and submit a list, we would accept that list. But he has to recognize that it's the list that was there on April one and that it is subject to tax. So he's not disputing the value. He's disputing that the bill should never have been made because the business was not open. And that's not a fact. That's not a. And that's not a fact, that's not a reason. The assets are taxable, whether it's open or closed.
So if we table this decision, and we give you the opportunity to fill out this form and submit it to the town with a true abatement, and follow that process, we could then make the decision based on that, correct?
Well, what would change if that happened would be the value placed on those assets.
Right.
But the fact that they were there or not, I don't think is gonna change. Unless he did, he can prove that those assets changed hands prior to April 1. My information was that it did change hands with the sale of the property.
Well, see, that's where the lie comes in. So that's where the lie comes in, because the personal property was not transferred to the buyer. The personal property, as you can see here, is completely taken out of the cabins and stored in my garages, in my sheds. I have three garages and a four-bedroom, two-story house that is cluttered with the contents of these cabins.
Right.
So
But did you hear me? That those assets still exist, and they're in your home, but not in your cabins.
Therefore, they are not taxable in my home. They are not taxable. They are not taxable in my home. You'll never make me believe that. I don't care what degree you have, where you went to school. You cannot tax my property in my personal home. You do not have that legal right.
Mr. Daigle, let him finish. Go ahead, Mr. Cousins.
Actually, I am finished. I enclosed a copy in that packet there of the Section 601, that defines personal property. And I put a word in the letter, "do not" last page. There's nothing in the personal property definition that says it's a business asset or it's located in any particular place. All channels
That's ridiculous.
and end of goods are personal property. And it is practiced in Maine to assess only to businesses. But the fact that the assets are part of the business, those aren't all for his debts at home. Those are business assets, and he's telling you straight up that he sold them. It's just that it was after April 1, so.
Excuse me, sir. Could you please, I think I missed that. Did you just say that I sold these properties?
I said that you said that you sold by a bill of sale prepared by Mr. Belfler.
No, no, sir, excuse me. There's a terrible misunderstanding here.
Oh, maybe.
This gentleman and that lady have witnessed the paperwork from attorney Bob Belfler. The purchase and sale agreement. The three articles, three, sir, not 20. Three articles that were left in the cabin that were sold to Ms. Thompson for an undisclosed amount of money. Now, the rest of the cabins were emptied, and this is now my personal property, stored in my garages for my personal use, and it is not taxable. I don't care what you say.
Okay. So I have a question. I have a
Yep.
Okay, so, so the bottom line is, you didn't turn in the 706. So now we're going back, so the responsibility is on you, so we cannot just tear up the bill, it has to be abated.
Okay.
So back to Jason's question, if he now puts a new 706 in with three items that were left, and that value, can we abate the rest?
If that's all proven, and he does submit the list, we can accept that list. So the answer is yes.
Okay.
Did you take those pictures with your cell phone?
These?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
So if you can submit the original files off your cell phone, those files
I don't know how to do that.
Okay, well, those files are timestamped.
So that cost me $85, $87 GEIPC through an email that my grandson sent from my phone to GEIPC.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just being brutally honest with you. If I look at the evidence I have in front of me here with the lack of the Title 36, 706A, I would look at this as you didn't fulfill all the needs, and I would deny the abatement. But if you can come back to the board with the proof of the dates that those items were removed from the cabins, and this Title 36, 706A in front of us, filed with the town, then we can have a different conversation, saying, okay,
Okay.
now the paperwork proves that these items were there, the photos that are dated prove that they were there, then we can make a different assessment. But as it stands with the evidence in front of you
Hey, well, I have to appreciate what you're saying, but I will express my discontentment with the entire process, that's what people call it, the process, all these years, and I just told you, I'm not an accountant, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a tech savvy guy, not a town manager or a police officer. I'm a builder. I've worked with my hands all my life. I have kept my books squeaky clean for 13 years of operation. I have paid every last penny in tax, 9% lodging tax, to the state of Maine for every single person that has come through the other main cabins in 13 years. 90% of the payments at our cabins was paid by cash that I could have easily taken and stuck in my pocket. But I tell you as God is my witness, that I have never cheated the state of Maine out of one single penny of tax revenue at 9%. And now that we profess to be a business-friendly community, oh, we're business-friendly, that you're gonna try to hang me now because I closed my cabins on March 25, you're now saying that you should have filed this 704, 706, whatever the heck it is, a little technicality, and you guys are gonna use that to say, no, we're coming down on you with a big hammer. And that's how you people operate.
Mr. Daigle
But we're business-friendly. Progress.
Mr. Daigle.
Progress.
Mr. Daigle.
Um, I'd like
Mr. Seer.
You are, you are addressing somebody here when you look at them as if they are the guilty party. The guilty party here is only one.
The guilty party is the man that lied. The guilty follow The guilty party here is the man that lied, right here, right here.
Right, that's enough, that's enough.
Mr. Daigle, just to respond to that, like I said, I've run some businesses before, and I am nowhere here in accounting whatsoever. So I ended up paying an accountant. I paid somebody to come in during the day and say, hey, Mr. Boucher, your federal taxes are due. Hey, Mr. Boucher, well, these are No, no, let me finish, let me finish. I like, let me finish. I did not make up these processes. I did not make up these rules. But I would not feel correct if I didn't follow these rules for every single person in this town, whether it's you, whether it's a large business, whether it's anybody else. I need to follow the laws and the rules that's in front of me, and I am just following what's in front of me here. I'm giving you the opportunity to do what's needed, to be able to
Very good. Thank you very much.
You know, that 706 form? We were just talking about that when we were talking about the mill. They have the same, 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 same process, no matter whether it's Mr. Daigle or
104 million versus 100,000 dollars.
It's the same, it's the same.
Oh, Mr. Seer.
It's the process.
You are Thank you, Mr. Cousins.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Cousins. Stop by for coffee, I won't charge you.
Yeah, hold on. Laurie, Laurie has Laurie, go ahead.
He's got another comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
But I just have one more comment, and that is, you know, we have the application filled out and signed by Mr. Daigle. There's no mention of any of that in there, and we're operating off of this application. Secondly, what he has told you folks there is a copy of the purchase and sale agreement. He closed on March 24. There's a prepared purchase and sale agreement, but that's not the sale. The sale happens when the money transfers. And there's where our date is crucial. It's the guy who ordered on April 1st that gets assessed on that property. And if it was Mr. Daigle, it's him, and if it was the new person, it's them. And that's kind of, kind of hard to stone by that.
Thank you. Laurie, thanks.
So Dan, I just wanna kind of answer to your thing too. I don't, honestly, whether this is date stamped or not, for me, it's enough evidence, just so you know, because I know when you emptied your cabins, and like, I know it's about board. My thing is that you did fill in a 706 prior. You had one back a few years ago. I looked into some of this stuff. And all I am thinking, because somebody I know that I've been trying to listen to has told me, go by the book, go by the book, go by the book, it never fails if you go by the book. And here we are, having a selectman with an abatement. I would give you the money out of the coffers tomorrow. But number one, you're a selectman, so I feel that we do not want to look like we're changing the process or bypassing the law or the process and making special favors just because we like you or I like you. So I just want you to understand that's I mean, I
Can I ask you an honest question?
Yes, yes.
From the first day I opened my cabins, the tax assessor, and I'm sorry, Mr. Cousins, I don't remember his name, but I do remember where he was from. He was from Lewiston. And his wife used to do the hair for the guy that used to own the Gateway Hotel here in town, Mr. Pebo.
We have that, is it, are you?
Okay.
Yes, 2009.
That gentleman came to my property. And I told you, I'm a builder, I'm not an accountant, I knew nothing about this, and I didn't know where so he came to help me out. He's the one that helped me to fill out that form the very first time. So I asked him, so is this a one-time deal? He said, no, the town is gonna send you a form every year, and if you buy, if you buy or change or add to the cabins, just fill it in, the value. The first few years, I did that, and he said, if, he said, if there are no changes, it's perfectly acceptable to write no change and just send it back in.
Right.
Okay? So to be honest with you, I do know I didn't do that for a number of years. I was in business for 13 years. The last few years, it was like, hey, look. I don't deal with this stuff every day. And if there was a problem, Mr. Cousins, you say that, I believe you've checked, Mr. Picard certainly checked, if I did return that, that form this year, if there was a problem, why did they not reach out to me? This is not something that I'm familiar with. I'm not. And if you people have zero appreciation for that, don't you come out on the streets and say that you're business friendly? Don't you dare.
And we're giving you the opportunity to do it.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
So perhaps then, as a board, we need to look at the letter that goes through the businesses, and we need to see if we can do more. But the fact is that whoever wrote that letter, however many years ago, and it goes out in the form and the process, is the process, and the law and the statutes are the law and the statutes. So we're just trying to follow what we're supposed to do.
Why do they not follow up?
Whether it's you or other businesses.
If I'm on the record books as filing these forms every year, if I failed, I don't know when I, I don't know when I failed, I really don't. It might have been a year, it might have been five, I really don't know. I was a one-man operation, I was a cleaning lady, I was the fireman, I was the cook. And I had a lot on my plate. And if there was a problem in the past, why did Town Hall not notify me, say, Dan, is there something going on here?
Dan, this was not a problem. You just stated, and many of us that have been in business have done the same as you have. You know
You never closed a business.
But
How did you know that when you closed a business? I don't know about that stuff.
Well, and that's fine, and we're all like, okay, Dan, it's a mistake, so what? Like, we're not, nobody's trying to come down on you and take money out of your pocket, because it's, let's, we're not gonna do we're not gonna do that right now.
So, no, no, I realize that, but it's his lie on this paper to that man over there. It's his lie right there.
That has nothing to do with the decision or whatever, with the
Okay, all right, that'll be the disciplinary part.
This, this is
This'll be the disciplinary part.
That has nothing to do with this.
Okay, you're correct.
And for the record, that was written before you even put in the application, because I had said to him, the application's coming, Dan told me it's coming.
Yes.
Put it on the agenda.
No problem.
Let's get this moving. And I was pushing to get this going, so he put the information in an email that he thought was what he was supposed to put in, to try to help, okay? Nothing was done nefariously or
Selectmen, Dan, you do not, you do not forward information of this nature saying that the personal property was conveyed with the real you do not make that kind of a statement, like, first of all, when you have no jurisdiction in that arena, where it says it perfectly clear over here that the town selectmen are responsible for that, and you do not lie to the state assessor or whatever capacity that Mr. Lewis
All right, so let's, we have
I don't like the word lie, but let's just, we're
Well, it's a lie. It's a lie. Let's follow what it is.
All right, all right, so I'd like to make a more
I will.
Hold on, before you do, I wanna Mr. Picard has been waiting here, so I wanna hear from him before we, before we, before we table this. Mr. Picard, go ahead.
My question is for Louis, in relation to, Louis, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, any personal property or any property that is assessed as of April 1, when we send the 706 letter, we have to have it back into you by April 1, correct?
If it has a deadline, then gone, huh?
Okay.
May 1.
So the town of Madawaska uses May 1 as a deadline.
Yeah.
My question is, and you can explain this, because I don't want it to come from me. When there is, if there was an error or an irregularity in the tax assessment, a bill that should not have gone out, or whatever, okay? The only way to remedy the bill, that assessment, is by abatement, correct?
Yes.
It's not, the town manager doesn't have the authority to, to tear up the bill, to wipe it away, or whatever you wanna call it. And it's not the tax collector's job to do that either. That, that is a transaction that can only happen through abatement. And now, for the board, and Louis, if you, correct me if I'm wrong, in our municipal accounting system, okay, there is no way to make that balance go away other than by paying the bill or labeling the transaction abatement. There's a dropdown menu in cash receipting, okay? For instance, if there is an abatement that is approved for a certain amount of money, that we would have a dropdown menu item in the cash receipting with clerks that would drop down, and we'd say, abatement. There's no other way, okay, for this correction to be done other than an abatement that has to go before the board of assessors. Am I, am I correct?
So, yes, you're absolutely correct, and what you're saying is that's the way the software works that you have. But it's actually a lot deeper than that, and that is that those amounts are part of your warrant. That warrant is a very, very official document that applies to the entire population of the town. And the tax collector's obligation is to make sure that the amounts due on that warrant are collected in one way or the other. So she neither has to collect the money, or she has to have that abatement, exactly as you're saying. And that's the bigger piece, is that, because that is, the state is auditing that every year as well.
Louis, if I may, and the board chairman, if I may, I do have another question. When board of a selectman, when the board of a selectman are acting as assessors, they are agents of the legislature and not the town of Madawaska, correct? Because the power to tax, all taxes in Maine are vested in the Maine legislature. Am I, am I correct?
Yeah, so Title 36 in the Maine statutes is entirely on tax law. And the assessors are, quote unquote, I'll say, subject to all of those laws. So, yes, you could, just as easy as Mr. Daigle can appeal the decision to deny his abatement, any other citizen can also appeal the decision to approve it, had they actually had the desire to do so. So if you don't follow the law, everybody else has that opportunity as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Daigle.
You sound frustrated. We're five people here, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 people. That one there in the corner there, he goes at a higher price than we do. But how many hours in tax dollars have you wasted to try to collect, Mr. Picard, $115?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely, it's not the issue at the moment, sorry, now, did you have something to say, Jason?
Yeah, I I make a motion to cease discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Discussion is ceased on Article eight. Um, do I need a motion now to table this article?
Well, you had a, you had a motion, you had a motion to approve the abatement and a second.
We're in the middle of a motion now. So whoever made the original motion could amend the motion.
Where does the, that's right, it's uh, so who made that motion?
Well, Mano.
Mano made the motion. Do we have a second? Did we have any other discussion? Dan was, so there's there's
No, but, no, I I would just say, if if we made, it would
She made the motion.
She made the motion, so she could adjust her motion, amend her motion
Yes.
to table it rather than accept it, and then whoever seconded could accept that change.
All right, so before before I ask Mano to do that or whether she wants, who seconded?
And then it go on a table again.
Who did, okay.
So I will need to amend my original motion to table this matter until we have our sufficient
To change, amend? Will you accept that, Louis?
I'll accept that in in second to to go.
Okay, so now I need a motion.
And you need a vote.
Definitely need a vote.
Yeah, okay, so do we have a vote? All of, all in favor? Against? So we have four in favor and one against.
I should have brought this up under a discussion, but can I, um What do you mean one against?
You had your, you are still up.
No, she had it up to you.
Oh, oh, sorry, 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 to me. Um, can I come help you do this seven oh six? Or you come sit with me and we'll, okay?
Sure, thank you.
I I, all right, I I
Great.
I've seen him a hundred times.
Take any help I can.
I will, I will come and help you, but you're gonna make coffee.
Pardon?
You're gonna make coffee.
Oh, very good.
Okay.
All right. Um, we're back to Article one, to consider the board meeting minutes of December fifteen and December eighteen.
Bye, Mr. Cousin.
Louis, thank you for uh, for your
Okay.
Yeah, you're definitely right.
We're not.
You're you're hoping so, right?
I'm okay either way, but uh please, but please to speak with you all, Mr. Dagle, this is personal, this is uh just doing my job.
Thank you, you did a good job.
All right.
Even if I don't believe you.
Yeah, okay.
I I make a motion to accept the board meeting minutes.
I will second.
I believe that we were not done with public participation.
I believe that we were. I asked the question, I asked the question
Did we not, did we amend the public participation to bring Article fourteen to talk to the lawyers first? Did we not interrupt? Did we rewind the tape?
I I remember, he did reserve the right, come by, I sure did.
But I thought, I I I thought that we were gonna move that on to other business.
Okay, all right.
Part of you are, is what you agreed, I think.
Okay, if you wanna move it to other business.
So we're back to
Uh, we are at the two-hour mark.
Oh my gosh.
Do I have a motion to go beyond the two hours?
I make a motion to go beyond two hours.
Do I have a second? All in favor, opposed? Opposed, we have, so we have, we have four, four and one against.
Opposed.
Article one, to consider the board meeting minutes of December fifteen and December eighteen. I'm sorry, we we did. All in favor? Opposed? So this was uh uh the meeting, uh the minutes of December fifteen?
And eighteen.
And eighteen together. Okay, so we're all done with Article one. Article two, to consider the treasurer's warrants. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept chairman's warrants.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I mean, any discussion?
Those warrants are on the counter over here, for everybody to see.
Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor? Opposed? Article two is carried. I'd like to table Article three to the next meeting, to consider the town's six-month financial expense and revenue reports. I think that probably merits some discussion and it could take us a while to go through that, so if you don't mind, I'd like to table that.
I make a motion to table Article three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? And table Article three. Uh, Article four, other business, board member updates. Do we have anything under?
Well, mine is kind of short.
Okay.
I did send an email to all the library board to get some input on my questions I have, how they operate and I haven't received anything yet, I just sent it today. And you said for the next agenda, we would be discussing possibly looking for a longer mat and a
Okay.
Well, it's probably veterinarian services, I'm sure.
So those are
For the next agenda.
Okay, those would be action items that I would like to make sure that they're listed in the next uh meeting.
Natalie started a uh, an action item list that she has, so every time I would just say that when you
Okay.
uh consider it to be an action item, just say that and then Natalie will will write that down.
Okay.
It'll be part of the record.
Okay.
So so you, there is no, there's no uh, there's no um, there's nothing else to be done, you're just making that that information available to us?
I'm just making you aware, that's right, I'm just letting you know what's going on, that's
Okay, very good. Um, the thing that I'd like to just uh make our our audience aware here is that we we have discussed um the fitness center and the multipurpose as far as opening up those uh those those businesses for for folks. And it is with the consensus of the board that that uh that we keep those um closed for the time being. We are gonna review that, I would think within the next month, but for the time being, uh they will stay closed. For the record. Mr. Dagle, did you have something else? On other business?
Yes, I do, quite a bit as a matter of fact. I would like to finish on Article eight. I look to this board to vote to take disciplinary action against the said employee by way of letter of reprimand placed to remain in his file until the expir- the expiring of his current contract or less. Should he be terminated or resign on his own? One simple letter of reprimand for failure to meet an acceptable level of performance.
This is an executive session, material?
No.
You know, we we are talking about an individual here?
He elected to do the executive sessions, we all got the email on that.
We're not there yet.
We're not there.
Not there yet.
Well, we'll take it up then. Uh, before we go any further, uh Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, on the agenda, don't sigh like that. It is not professional and it is not acceptable.
Mr. Dagle, we are trying to follow a format here and you're jumping uh from one article to the other and it it does frustrate this board because we're
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, fine, that's what you paid for.
We have to stop you every time.
That's what you paid for. Now, now, on your agenda, you have two executive sessions.
Yes.
Article ten, Article eleven.
Yes.
Uh, at the previous meeting, I clearly asked for three executive sessions. You asked me specifically at the last meeting, what are you asking for, two? I said three, and you repeated, you're asking for three executive sessions, I said yes. So I don't know where I stand, I don't know because there there are three separate events that need to be taken up, and I need to know which ones were taken up.
Well, um, we're not ready for that yet, that is not part of the discussion here and what we're we're talking about.
Okay.
But you and I have addressed each other and I have questioned you uh time and time again through many different formats, whether it's through other board members, through phone calls to you, through trying to meet with you directly on the street and you've never responded once to what you were trying to refer to. I don't have a statute here, I don't know who you're talking about, what you're talking about.
At the last meeting, Mr. Chairman
I noted.
And uh, Mr. Jason will back me up on this because he spoke up at the last meeting. At the first meeting, I asked you to put it on for executive session and you ran from me and you didn't. It didn't appear, so at the second meeting, I asked you a second time to put it on next meeting's agenda. And you told me that you needed more information. Review the tapes, sir.
I I and I'm not disagreeing with you, I just never got it.
Well, don't squint, don't squint and shake your head as if you're lying.
But I never got, all right, let's keep going, let's keep going.
Now, no, no, I'm going to explain.
This may, wait, wait, wait. No, explain that when we get to that article, we're not, we're not there right now, we're under other business at this point.
I need to know
He wants to add one.
No, I don't wanna add one.
You're supposed to have three on here.
I'm supposed to have three and there's two that appear, I just need, I I just need to know which two they are.
Well, you can question, you can request
That's all I'm asking. I asked for three and I told him
Well, they want it in public, so you can add one and we can just do, get rid of all three at once.
Is it acceptable to add one here?
Let's not pass this on to the next one.
Do we do what we want to do, we don't follow the rules, I don't know what the rules on that.
You you can, you can add an agenda item, can we not, under other business?
Of course.
Of course we can.
So
So do you wanna add one?
In the form of a motion, I make a motion to add one, but you have to
Okay.
So I make, I make a motion to add this to the agenda.
So will it be Article eleven A?
It can be.
All right, so be it.
You made that motion, Dan, I'll second it, um because I know that you wanna get this out and over with, so I'll support.
And are all three, I know there's an individual in the audience here that also forwarded an email that one of the executive sessions in my paperwork is executive session number two. Uh, that the individual, I had asked for an executive session, but the individual forwarded his email this past week, uh also saying that he wanted that addressed in open session. So is it fair to assume that all three executive sessions will be taken up in public session? That's a yes or a no?
Well, are they related to the same same people?
Yeah, I don't know that they're related to the same people.
He he did make that clear, I I
I certainly did.
I I, Dan and I don't agree on on any of this stuff, but he did make it clear that that's what it was. So, I mean, it's it's um I I certainly don't wanna be back in this situation at the next meeting.
All right, so 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 in order of expediency, we're gonna just say yes, that that is the case, that it is for the same two people. And we are going to issue these under Article ten and Article eleven. At this point, we're, we've added this third item, which will be discussed in the same manner at the same time. Is that appropriate? Are you talking about the same people here that you were discussing?
There are three people involved.
Three different people.
Yes.
Why didn't you just share that with me, Dan?
You don't listen when I talk to you.
You never mentioned that, and you never, and I asked you.
Well, we we will deal with it accordingly when we get there, we're not there yet.
Mr. Chair, if there's gonna be an executive session for a different employee, that employee has has to be notified
Yes.
and has, so that they can be present for that executive session.
They are present, Mr. Peikard.
They they weren't notified that there was gonna be an executive session related to that.
Okay, we 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 can table it when we get to that one. Uh but but as far as executive session number two, with a town employee, the town employee is here present and he did express that he wanted this. And 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 executive session number two, I've had this conversation with uh two different board members. Uh this one, executive session number two is gonna be very speedy, uh very smooth, unless you people complicate it. So if it's if it's okay to take that one up first, get that behind us, then we'll deal with the other two. Is that acceptable?
Mr. Peikard, can we, can we actually add an executive session at this point with not knowing the statute or the individual? As far as I'm aware, we cannot.
No, I, 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 for point of discussion, I have to apologize because our discussion was you get two items for one person and one item for another person.
Okay, and
So
But you're now talking about three different people.
Did I or did I not ask for three executive sessions? That's a yes or a no? Did I ask for three executive sessions?
Yes.
Good, we got that established. Can we move forward from there?
Did you say it was for three different people?
No, I did not.
Okay, well, then I was wrong because when we talked, you told me one thing for one person, which you were actually gonna get, not even do, and two things for another person.
Let me clarify it a bit.
You never told me about the third, so I was never defending you and I'm wrong.
No, no. For executive session number one and executive session number three? Just for clarification. There are two people involved, but only one that will be addressed. If that makes any difference. You, Mr. Chairman, are one that's involved, but will not be addressed. Mr. Peikard, you are also involved, but you will be addressed. That's, we're we're up against.
So it's simple, we can't have an executive session to discuss another board member that's unavailable, so in that case, it's only about one group.
Okay.
Which is here, so
Okay, so if I leave the other individual out, we can go ahead with our executive session and address Mr. Peikard in disciplinary action?
I'm not sure, can can we
I am.
Well, I mean
We have two executive sessions on the agenda to deal with discipline of an employee, not a select person, not an elected official. We have disciplinary action of an employee. Um, two executive sessions and we are going to take them up tonight, even if the clock strikes twelve.
Listen, they are there, they're already on the agenda.
They are.
All right, so can we move on?
Yes.
All right, so we're still dealing with Article four, do we have any other business going on on Article four?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any other business at this time.
Nobody else has anything else for Article four, we will move on. Article five, to consider bids for the Fornia Road tax-acquired property.
Okay, so looking at the uh ad that went out for the uh the property. I can just find it here. That was publicized in in Saint John Valley Times. Uh, the board at a previous meeting had set the uh the parameters for the sale, the minimum bid uh and and authorized that to go up to to bid, and so we did that. Um, we received one bid, excuse me, that bid was received on December three, two thousand and twenty at eight thirty-two AM. Uh, and that is a sealed bid, uh would somebody wanna do the honors of uh of opening that?
Mano, you're right there.
I have a question, if you may, before we open the bids.
Go ahead.
Do we, do we have an
Just take it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have an established policy on the posting of tax-acquired properties? Is there a legality or responsibility at the town level? Because that, that uh tax-acquired property was at our November meeting. I'm just curious as to uh where this needs to be posted and what the stipulation is.
There is no, there is no policy. Um, typically, we advertise um these ads, uh I have this ad that has gone out, which is quite frankly, it's something that was just taken out of the computer, it's a template that we've been using for a long time.
Because, because I came in and I was interested in the property myself, I would have put a a bid in, but I was I was told that December eighteen was the cutoff point for the bids. And I asked, uh, how, when and where are these bids put up? Because there there is always, always, for for a hundred years now, there's always been a tax on people that have purchased property for tax, or tax-acquired property, saying that they got it for nothing. I'm just wondering what we have on the books for a timeframe for posting of these properties.
We we don't have anything and the
So who set the date of December eighteen?
The board. And I and I and I believe the record will show that either you made a second to that motion uh to go ahead and advertise uh the property, so I
To advertise the property, yes, but not the date.
The date was part of the motion, right, the date was part of the motion.
I I don't remember exactly what the motion was, but I I know that, I do know that that you were part of that motion, uh I don't have that in front of me here today, so
Is it possible to review the tape?
The the terms
Not right now, but
Not right now?
The the terms of the sale were were approved by the board at a board meeting.
The term of the sales, yes, but the for the posting, the legal posting is what I'm getting at, the date of December eighteen is what I'm questioning.
Well, that could be for a further discussion, I mean, we're not gonna make it, we're not gonna change the the process.
That could be for a, we don't have It's a protocol.
But I just have a question, is a board member allowed to place a bid on that?
But I just have a question. Is a board member allowed to place a bid on that?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, well, at this time, are we ready to open the?
Is this a discussion we can add to the next agenda? Can we give this as an act action item to Natalie to um discuss the bid process, the next agenda, the one that so we can make sure that it's good going forward?
Thank you.
So you can open it, yes?
Yep.
The check in here.
Which is a deposit?
Do I read it?
No.
I Candice Seer would like to place a bid of seven thousand two hundred fifteen dollars on the town of Madawaska, five block three on Fornia Road, map twenty-nine, lot three. She was at one twenty-two six seven.
And the deposit is in the amount of of the bit ten percent of the bid price?
Seven twenty-five eight.
Yeah, okay, so it it does meet. Uh bid was received in a timely manner. Uh and as far as concerned, the bid has met the requirements of of the advertisement. So with that said, the board would be authorized to go ahead and uh accept the bid.
I make a motion to accept the bid.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I will second.
All in favor, or any other discussions on that? Is there a discussion? Did we discuss that at all? No issue on the discussion, so all in favor? Anybody opposed? All in favor? No, nobody opposed. Article. Article six, to consider the land donation to the town on Gerard Street. Article six.
So you have a, I was approached by the Sir Jim Quinn, who lives nearby uh to that property. And he had a strip of land that is on Gerard Street, like all guys are just selling in the article there, which is GBR. Um which is, I've indicated here from our tax map, and I put like a arrow uh indicating what that property is. It's a vacant piece of land, it's a little strip along Gerard Street, uh and that's lot two oh one B. I attached for you with that the tax card. It says that a thousand dollars of that land value, there are no structures on that property. So the you know, the request is to donate the land, and the town would basically, you know, draw up the the quick clean deed or whatever would have to take place for that donation to happen. If the boards wanted to to accept it. So that's an offer that I got that I came to me that I've gotta put before you for consideration. I've given you the information. Um in in the town meeting authorization, Article authorizes the board to accept land donations. Provided our gifts, provided that they don't exceed, I believe it's a hundred thousand dollars in value. So uh you would be well well within your authorization to accept this if you so choose.
Well, can I have a motion? To accept?
Well, we can.
The donation? Do I have a second? Nobody is seconding.
Well, I'll I'll second for the point of conversation if we wanna if we wanna do that.
Well, yeah, we'll have a conversation as this, yep.
The reason I wasn't seconding it, I I just don't know why we would want to do that. I mean, it's not a huge tax amount, but why would we wanna um you know, accept the piece of property and not have the taxes on it and what, there's nothing we can do with it. I mean, maybe they can sell it to the people that are abutting, like there's too little lots there. I don't I I just I just don't I don't understand why we would do it. It's not something that would.
Yep, that's a valid. Yeah, it it's it's a real strange request that they would just wanna give it to the town.
Well, I'm sure it's not a useful piece to them maybe, and they're paying a tax on it and.
Well, sure, but why not just sell it?
Yeah.
I I don't have an opinion. That's
I'm not sure.
Right.
Somebody brings this to my attention, and I put it I put it before you guys, and it's for your consideration.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of purchasing it. I don't see a use for the town for, and it's just gonna be.
Or wouldn't be a purchase if they're trying to.
Or accept it, sorry. Then we're gonna have the expense of of doing a quick clean deed and.
Right.
Yeah.
And it it really I don't I I cannot distinguish the fact that there's any value that would be worth something here for the town, so. Anyway, I have a I have a a a motion, and I have a second. Um is there any other discussion? Then if I could have a vote whether we accept this donation of the land, or this would be what, lot two oh four?
Two oh one B.
Two oh one B, which includes both of them. Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Nobody's in favor, and all four are opposed, all five. Article seven, to consider a sewer abatement for account three zero seven eight five.
So you have the narrative there. The reason is that this account is uh is this a residential area, it's a trailer water line that came in of the trailer that sprung a leak uh and caused their consumption to skyrocket. We get our consumption data from the Madawaska Water District, and we dump that data into our accounting, our billing system for sewer. So we have based our sewer on flat rate uh plus consumption. And this obviously is water that never went, never made it to the sewer system. Uh we've approved these in the past, so my recommendation would be to to approve this uh request.
Is it four ninety-one for the full amount or just the amount we assume was?
Just the amount related to the consumption.
So I make a motion to accept the sewer abatement.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I will have the need your signatures on that. I'll put it on the counter with the warrants for you.
Article eight, we've already gone through. Article nine, consider request by the police department to replace one police cruiser.
So Ross has approached me to uh to inform me that it's it's getting time to probably rotate uh cruiser uh in our out of our fleet. And so he basically asked him, could you just formalize that in an email, uh so he get um Ross has other information that he wants to share with you, and I would just go ahead and go to forward. Are you okay with that?
Okay, uh we have three vehicles currently in use. We have a two thousand thirteen Taurus that has ninety-one thousand miles. Uh two thousand seventeen SUV that has a hundred and seventy thousand miles, and the two thousand nineteen Charger with forty-one thousand miles. So I'd like to retire the two thousand seventeen SUV that has a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it. The maintenance fees are starting to uh become excessive with that vehicle.
Um I'll make a motion that um we allow Ross to seek bids for a police vehicle and retire the four SUV.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yep.
At this point, is is this just granting you, are you just requesting permission?
To go up the bid.
To go up to bid?
Yes.
When is the question ever entertained? Do we need the cruiser? Because don't be chasing after me to lock me up in jail tomorrow. But that's the big, the high and heavy question on the streets these days. Uh why do they need another cruiser? What are we to tell the taxpayers?
Well, well, we have a vehicle.
And how do we answer that?
Have a vehicle with a hundred and seventy thousand miles that's outlived its usefulness as a police patrol vehicle, and I think it becomes a safety issue. Definitely a liability issue for the town.
So there there are definitely more than one incident happening in town at one time, I assume. So one car is probably not sufficient to sort to uh.
No, one, no, we need, like, we have the blue Taurus that we keep. Mostly now is a backup. Um it's unmarked. We also use it for traveling for different trainings to go downstate. Uh when an officer goes down to the cabinet, that should be coming up soon, uh that's the vehicle he'll use to travel with, so if the vehicle's gone for the whole week.
Yeah, and if one car needs repairs, you need a backup.
We just need a backup. And we try to rotate them so that we keep the mileage down.
Yep. Now, now Ross, you you mentioned uh that if they're in PD, might have one available?
There's a possibility. I talked to Sergeant Dyer last year day, and he was thinking that they may just keep it and use it as an animal control officer vehicle. Which he'll get back to me on that.
Yep, you know, looking at the two vehicles, two and three here, um it certainly appears like that SUV is used considerably more than the Dodge Charger. It's only two years apart, but yet there's a there's a a hundred and thirty thousand miles difference there.
Right, so once we uh that probably had a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it when we got the Charger. Um so we kinda figured it's getting towards the end of its lifespan, so I'd rather the officers use the older vehicles and save the mileage on the newer vehicles. So we don't end up one year needing to buy two vehicles the same year.
And I don't know if uh if you've ever ridden in the front of a police car rather than the back, but a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand miles might not sound like a lot when you're going Portland inbound, but when you're getting in and out of the vehicle quite often, those seats get beat up pretty bad.
I'm just on the back.
Those vehicles ride rough, so. And I I see here you also have forty-four thousand in your in your reserve. Does that have to cover the cost of?
Probably not.
Something, or?
Um I believe the Charger, um that we had, that was um I guess, I think it was approximately twenty-seven thousand the last time, and then we updated it, so yes, that would be, we went with the same vehicle.
Yeah, so you're not going after more money. You've got the.
Correct.
Do I have a Mr. Vigil?
Because of my age, uh I was born on the frugal side of the fence. Comes an age where you're not afraid of anything. Uh on 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 this issue, uh I will not be your friend. I think with all of the financials for the town right now that we're faced with, uh we're 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 looking at upcoming budgets in the very near future. Uh there is going to have to be budget cuts across the board. I am not saying that I am gonna vote against purchasing a cruiser once we have a reasonable bid. But I will definitely be looking to you as the chief of the department to see if there are possibilities of reducing the mileage. Uh and I'm sure that if you plot that out, if you graph that out, that the mileage on your cruisers per year must be pretty consistent. But if it means having to cut back on the mileage to extend the life of our vehicles, uh I believe that that will that will be a strong recommendation for the future. We have to start to be proactive, reducing all of our budgets. Uh people on the streets, a lot of people are saying, well, ten percent across the board. I don't agree with that, because there are some departments that can take a ten percent cut, there are some departments that can't. So uh I'm gonna ask you politely to get your scribble pad out and to see how you can help us.
I'll I'll go on record now, saying I don't agree with your assessment.
Okay.
But to save mileage at the cost of not patrolling, giving the coverage to the town is not
Well, that'll be that'll be board decision.
a rational argument.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So do we have a motion?
We already have a motion and a second.
All in favor? Ross moving forward, looking for bids for another vehicle? Opposed? We have four, there are four and one that's opposed. Article ten, to consider executive session for personal matters per one M R S A subdivision four oh five six A. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, well, if I may, Mister Chairman, I've done extensive research. We are not because of the email, and now I am at liberty according to the MMA manual to mention the names, the positions of the people involved, seeing that they have submitted to the board in writing their desire to have this in open session. Mister Picard, am I correct with this? You are correct? Okay.
So we are, I guess.
We are not in executive session.
I I I am asking how do I move forward with the executive session uh request?
Well, I I agree.
Do I do I look for a, do I look for a motion in a second?
Yes, yes.
And then and then you, within the discussion, you're gonna refuse it?
So I've asked this letter to, I've asked this this question, and the letter preempts the executive session. I mean, you can go through the motions of voting uh whether or not you wanna enter an into an executive session. It becomes a moot point uh because the letter preacts you. So it's from a procedural standpoint, you can do what you want. The board can do what they want here. But in in essence, what's gonna happen is uh it's going to be an open session regardless of of however the board decides to take the the article. Um and I think before you have to decide which of the two employees are are going to be part of the first and second executive session.
So in order to save time here, because it's already eight o'clock, I I am going to advise the board that we are um not going to go through the motions of going through an executive session vote and the letter that's been sent to us. And am I assuming today that we are talking about Mister Picard first?
Well, Mister Seer, you're puzzling me tremendously because half an hour ago, you told me that you were prepared to go on to finish this meeting. And now you're telling me that.
I don't mind doing, going through the process. It's 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 a five-minute process. It's not a big deal. If you want to, if you want me to go through that 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 format, then then I'm okay with that. It was it it it's it's gonna be an open session either way, so I guess I'm just saying, why do we have to go through the format?
I'm sorry, I don't follow you. Could you please explain about the format? I I I'm just not getting that.
Well, on on our on our uh article six, it it it's asking for an executive session.
Yes, yes, but by by virtue of the fact
Alright, so so the.
that Mister Picard has sent out an email last Friday night, last Friday afternoon, to the effect that he wants that aired out in public, according to the MMA manual, we we are not in an executive session.
I understand that. I I I'm not arguing that. All I'm saying at this point is, do we go through the process?
We don't have to.
No, no.
No, and that's what I'm saying. We don't have to, but he's he's asking me why I'm not doing it.
No, yeah, no.
You you guys are arguing the same thing. You were writing something down, and Gary made it.
We do not. Let's just start with the.
Okay, so. And and can we really start with the other person so that, because it's going to be fast, and if he feels like leaving, he could leave?
Are you are you saying you'd like to do executive session number two first?
Yes, could we do that, please?
Yeah, I'm I'm perfectly okay with that.
Because I I he doesn't need to see her if he doesn't want to.
So I'm assuming that uh the executive session number two is pertaining to Eric.
Yes.
And since he has also stated that he wants to have this in an open session.
Yes, he has.
Then we are ready to move forward.
Am I at liberty to address this?
Yes.
Eric, uh I certainly don't want you to misunderstand. Uh I do have to confess to you that I I I I really didn't know how to bring this up to an open discussion. It does have to do with a post on social media that you posted. And the only reason that I addressed it is because I got two calls from business owners that were very, very acceptable. That simple enough?
Simple enough, but I don't know.
Okay, so so after that I've received the complaints, I'm under an obligation to do something, okay? Uh a past board, a past board uh had discussions on making guidelines pertaining to. A past board, a past board had discussions on making guidelines pertaining to the use of social media for 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 the employees. For some reason, that never went anywhere. So the failures of a past board, we inherit. So if we didn't follow through with putting together guidelines for the use of social media for the employees, if if we didn't carry that out, we have failed you and we have failed the community. So with that being said, until we do our job here and put together a manual with guidelines for you people to adhere to, all I want here tonight is to politely ask you, if possible, as the ambulance director, as an employee, please refrain from posting anything that could bring back retribution. That's all I have. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Cool.
Are we all set with that?
I'm all set. Told you I was easy.
Erica, you all set with that? You are. Anybody else? Yep.
I just want to mention, the town doesn't have a social media policy, so I I don't feel that it's appropriate for us to reprimand any employees who post on their personal social media account. I do advise, there are fine lines with what we should or shouldn't say, all of us, because we do, you know, the public does see us as representing the town. But at this point in time, I don't feel that we can properly reprimand any employee for something that we don't have a policy about. I'm not saying you're wrong.
No, no, I I I just felt it was important for Eric to understand that I was responding to complaints. As a selectman, I felt a responsibility to address it.
Go ahead, Laurie.
No, go ahead, Manon. Well, no, I mean, if we're, when we're gonna address this, hopefully includes the board selection as well in our social media policy. But not just any employee, but the board members as well. Because we are responsible for what we put out. Expect feedback negative, whatever. It's important that we represent the town, that we do it. Try avoid dashing, try to avoid negative things, because that's all there is on there. So do like I do post cats and coffee. You're safe.
Or off. That works very well.
Yes, it does. Well, it works the same if you're gonna hint.
Hard?
Can I?
Go ahead, Laurie.
Okay, so I um, I I wanna, this this is not exactly pertaining to you. It's the whole situation here. Um, I I wanna set the record straight about this as I come into what I wanna say for him, but somebody asked me last week why I was supporting Dan in these executive sessions and I just want to point out that in the beginning of our whole thing, and this goes back to what Dan just said about not following through. In the beginning, when you guys all came on the board, I specifically asked for an executive session for personnel matters to talk about what our expectations were of Gary as town manager and how we were gonna conduct ourselves moving forward. We, when Dan brought this to me and started talking to me about this and he was upset, and I saw his post on social media, which I don't think is anymore is any better than than anyone else's, and and I think those standards that we hold for our employees, we absolutely have to try to follow ourselves and lead by example. I said, these are not things for Facebook. These are things to take up with a person in private. So in his attempt to take it up in private, it came out as a disciplinary executive session. I never had any intention of supporting a disciplinary executive session because I feel freedom of speech is in employees, just as it is a board member, and as Manon said, if we're gonna have a policy, it needs to address all of us. The other thing, I just want to make a point for future reference, that according to the book and the law that we're always being told we should follow, the town manager plan tells us that as board members, we have one employee, and that is the town manager, and any discipline or issues with the employees that are under him go through the town manager. Um, I do know Gary and Eric had a brief discussion about this, just saying kind of like, hey, did you, you know, really wanna have a target out there on Facebook or whatever? Um, so for future, I am just saying that I am opposed to any type of disciplinary action with any employee, unless it's, you know, the town manager himself, because this board has to remain neutral. There is an appeal process in the employee handbook that the board gets to decide. Um, they can come with a grievance, and if we start getting involved in disciplinary actions with town employees, that takes that grievance process away from them. And so I just need to make that a point, that, you know, this is not the right thing to do. We, this this is, this is
Well, I I openly admitted
No, 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 I know, I know.
To Eric that I I didn't know
You didn't know, I know.
What channel to to and
I know. Sometimes just a personal discussion is is easy.
Okay.
You know?
Easy.
You know what else could work? Discussion with Gary.
Mr. Seer, the last time that I made a, put a phone call into Mr. Picard, he hung up the phone on me. That'll be taken up a little bit later. In executive session.
Wait, reserve comment. All right, so are we all set with the with with Mr. Seer at this point?
I'm all set. Mr. Seer, you all set? Is there anything you'd like to say, Mr. Seer?
Just like to say, I didn't do anything wrong. My Facebook posts is still there because there was nothing I posted inappropriately. And that's where I'm at.
But?
But, or do you, do you understand that I needed to respond to two complaints that I received?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Mr. Chair, the law on, as it pertains to social media and and employees' rights, I think that even even with a personnel, even with a personnel policy that addresses social media, okay? Uh, so my understating is that if an employee makes a statement, I, such and such, working for the town of Madawaska in this department, announces himself on their personal page and makes a statement, okay, could be, if we had a personnel policy, could be
Reprimanded.
Could be, you know, disciplined for that, for not being in line with our personnel policy. I don't, I don't believe right now that if somebody who uses their personal, personal Facebook post, okay, when they make an announcement or a post on social media, okay, if they don't announce themselves as the town employee, I'm not sure that we have any grounds, okay? It would be, I think that in our personnel policy, we would ask, when we do get to social media and putting some some safeguards in place, some some reasonable guidelines in place for for the benefit of our employees in our, in our, this board, that we would ask our employees, okay, if posting on social media for topics that may be related to town business, that they declare that they're not speaking on, on, they don't make representations on behalf of the town, but themselves. So they can, so that we can delineate from a legal perspective, the difference between personal post and a post being on behalf of the town. I think that would protect the employee and would protect the town. That's all I have.
Hopefully, we're gonna make our way there.
We're never getting there.
We're never getting there. All right, so at this point, we're on to article.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, it's eight o'clock. I'd like to know the rest of the board, because some of this could take some time. I am not in favor myself of going on, unless the rest of the board wants to go on, but if we go at it, we're going to the end.
Well, I I I am in favor of of going through this process at this point. I I I'm ready to go forward, so does anybody else have any thoughts or feelings about that?
I personally want to get this over with, as I'm sure Gary does. I mean, if this is out there, and this is out there, you know, to close it back up and and go home, it's not fair, it's not fair to him unless, you know, that's what he wants to do.
Well, I have
Yeah, so let's, let, then let's move forward.
I have, I have an addition, I have another, I have something under, you asked me if I hold off till other business rather than in public participation. Uh, I have an item there, an agenda item to be placed. I was gonna place it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Right.
Uh, because I was under the impression, and wrongfully so apparently, that we cannot add to the agenda. I was under the impression that we cannot add to the agenda once we're in session. And and I don't know if I can add this to this session to deal with everything, or if we need to
Does this matter refer to the same person as you, as we discussed a while ago?
Yes. Yes.
Did we not accept that theory that it is the same person? So it does
Yes.
So why do you think you need another article to add to this? We're talking about the same individual.
Yes, but it's it's a totally different situation. Not related to the two others. So I don't know if it's acceptable to bring that on the table. I don't know if that's legal.
Do I have opinions from the board?
I mean, I would say
Uh, no, I I, no, I will not accept an opinion from the board. The only thing, I'll need to see it in the manual where we are given that authority before we find ourselves in a legal pickle here.
So so you're looking to add an article for next, for next
I have, I have another, I have another situation that you're well aware of that took place last week that needs to be addressed.
Again, I I I I feel as if we're dealing with the same individual, just different situations. I don't see that this needs to be carried beyond this meeting.
We need verification before this turns on the board or on me personally.
So can I say something? We're not going into executive session, so we don't have to be specific about what we're talking about. This is discussion in open session, so in that case, you're not restricted on what you can talk about. So I would start at the top of your list, work your way down. If we find something we cannot talk about because of certain legal reasons, we'll flag it, we'll put it on the X agenda, rather than
What would be an example of of that?
I I don't know, and you could, I mean, I, let's talk about his tractor. He blew instead of red. I can't just throw something out there without hearing what you have to say.
No, what?
So I think I start at the top of your list. If you mention a topic
What I have to say, what I have to say
Go ahead, Laurie.
Listen, you never told them what you wanted to talk about to begin with. So Gary's sitting there having no idea what you want to talk to him about. So whatever you talk to him about, unless he objects, which he's already said, let's do it.
You're 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 one hundred percent correct.
He doesn't even know, so
Okay, well
Why does it matter?
Well, well, you're correct, but according to the MMA manual, first of all, you cannot specify in public the details of it, nor the name of the individual.
You're talking about executive session.
Yes.
But this is not where we're going.
Yes. Let me follow this through. It was brought to the board, it was brought on the agenda as it, as an executive session to deal with this. Mr. Picard is elected to go public, but it's the same situation. But I want it to be perfectly clear that some very private information will be coming out.
Then it's at, it's at his discretion whether he wants to discuss it or or not. He can decide to take, to take this into a
Have you looked into the legality? The MMA manual is very explicit. That if the individual that is going to be addressed in an executive session chooses to go public, he must submit it to the board in writing.
Right, which which is, which is correct.
So is, is an email, does email satisfy the statute as far as writing? Has anybody checked with MMA? And speaking of MMA, I have a question, Mr. Chairman, pertaining to MMA. Who has the right to call MMA? Does the whole board?
Mr. Picard and I.
And and who made up that rule?
I believe it's in the MMA manual.
So that's an MMA rule? Mr. Seer, we have, is that correct?
Yeah, I saw your document. The board, the board, MMA legal asks that the board point one or two individuals at the most to be the people who reach out to them for course, for legal correspondences. And that's it. So it's in the past, it was done before. People, it's been the chair, myself, finance director in the past. So and and they do that because they they try to, they want to channel as much as they can email traffic so that it's not coming from everywhere.
Does that answer your question?
Not really, Mr. Chairman. It sends me in a terrible spin. I'm all puzzled. Because in a lengthy conversation this morning with MMA, I have the name of the individual that I spoke with, and it's not the receptionist that answers the phone, good morning, MMA. She told me, Mr. Daigle, the attorney is going to call you. Two hours later, the attorney called me. We had an extensive discussion on this. The attorney told me, any board member, any board of selectmen member has the right to call MMA for legal advice.
Can we, can we, can we, I I don't want to address that tonight, but can we follow?
Well, Mr. Seer, you're filling me with stories that are not true.
Well, you're, 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 you're making an assumption there, because the MMA officer accepted your call doesn't mean that that's the right channel and the right way to go.
Will you let me to, will you let me finish?
Can we stick to the agenda item, guys? We've got a lot to do.
Really, we're getting off, off, off
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, we're we're being exposed here.
Manon was Manon was denied. You were denied.
Yeah, no, yes, I understand you were denied. In the discussion with the attorney, I said, can you tell me then why Madawaska that only the chairman and the town manager? Explained it very clearly, that that changed under the administration of past manager, Mikey Blank, in the year two thousand and two. But most municipalities in the state of Maine allow full counsel to call an N A.
Can we put that on as an action item for us to review? Is that okay?
It bothers me that we get incorrect information.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It bothers me tremendously. That we spout off the top of our head not knowing, and we 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 send that out as gospel. And people believe it because they have no way of of verifying
You know, Mr. Daigle, you're you're trying to to reference here that we are doing this on a regular basis, and and I will reject that comment completely at this point. If I misspoke here at this, at this meeting, at this time, about this issue, about this particular issue, then I stand corrected. We are gonna do, we are gonna do some research, and we are going to find out exactly what the rules are.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so back to article ten. This article now is in an open session. Do you want to start the discussion?
Yeah.
This pertains to Mr. Picard, I am assuming.
Am I at liberty to mention your name because you're involved? I am not looking for any disciplinary action towards the chairman of the board, but the chairman of the board is directly involved with the situation.
Yes, you are in open session.
Mr. Cousin, you got me all mixed up in my notes here. Give me a second, please. This session is to address the assault and ambush publicly on selectman Daniel Daigle at a past meeting, which I'm sure you well remember, where you certainly pressed my buttons, and I handed in my resignation at that meeting. Mr. Chairman, since you carried out this pre-planned public humiliation of a Mister Chairman, since you carried out this pre-planned public humiliation of a fellow selectman in violation of the Town of Madawaska Board of Select Peoples bylaws, as well as the MMA manual, bylaw section eleven of Board Conduct and the MMA handbook allowing the individual the right to an executive session. What you carried out there on that night completely fit the bill to be done in an executive session, but you chose to do it out in public, no second thought about it.
Well, that information was already out to the public, you had already put it out there.
Put what out there?
That text. That text was already out there, everybody, you had, you left it out there for everybody to see. So all I did is I repeated what you wrote.
Okay.
Nothing more, nothing less.
Okay. In your planned assault, you condemned three Facebook posts of mine with no grounds, with no, with no policy in place forbidding me to do so. And you flagrantly made a public spectacle of me in an attempt to publicly shame, chide, and embarrass me and humiliate me in public, verified by the video. This was confirmed by town manager Picard's pre-rehearsed speech that when I left the meeting after handing in my resignation, town manager Picard gave out his little pre-rehearsed speech following your ambush. This was confirmed by the mysterious rising up of three department heads, Chief Ross Newell, ambulance director Eric Seer, and fire chief Jim Sutti, praising Gary Picard's administration. In an attempt to confirm my suspicions, I questioned one other select person. The conversation from the night of the assault went from, and I quote, it's in here. And I quote, "I had no idea that he was gonna do this."
But Mister Daigle, could, if I could stop you.
No, no, you're not, no, I have the floor, sir. And it'll be without interruption.
Let me, let me.
It'll be without interruption.
I'm asking you to make this short, because you're getting out of hand with the idea that this was all preconceived, which there was.
Mister Chairman, you are.
There was nothing like that.
I have the floor, and it'll be as long as the clock requires, because I address this.
I am the chair, and I will decide.
I, I asked you ten minutes ago if you wanted to continue the meeting, and you said, yes, we are gonna get through this. So we are gonna get through this, and at the moment, I have the floor, and Mister Chairman, you are out of order. Point of order, you are out of order. I have the floor. The conversation on November thirteen went from, I had no idea that he was going to do this, speaking of you. On November eighteen, it's in here. We all three knew he was gonna do this. He spoke to all three of us on Thursday. Nice. And some wonder why the levels of trust are shallow. On November twenty-four, on November twenty-four, when I started to speak to the same selectmen about disciplining certain individuals, that individual conversation turns to, I can't support disciplinary action on something that I participated in. So we go from, I had no idea, do I participate in, but that's neither here nor there.
Mister Daigle, I, I don't, I, I'm, I'm looking for a, a, something here that, that I can, that I can understand where you're going with this, because as far as I can tell right now.
I am painting the picture.
There is, you're painting the wrong picture.
No, I have the floor, point of order, sir, point of order. Secondly, town manager Gary Picard, which was the, which was the basis of my post, where he refused to greet the honorable Susan Senator Susan Collins on her last visit, her, her visit to Madawaska, the very last visit of her campaign trail, by hiding behind this manual right here, the ICMA Code of Ethics. This is what we were given as a reason why he couldn't come out to greet Susan Collins. I, I would like to point out that Susan Collins was instrumental in funneling two hundred million dollars to this community for the project of the new international bridge. And he, and the town manager was telling us that this code of ethics would not allow him to come greet Susan Collins. Chairman Doug Seer painted out this picture that Susan Collins, lady that works for her out of her office in Prescott, she was in direct communication with him. She was also in direct communication with Dan Daigle, I have all the emails. Three separate phone calls that she gave me telling me what was taking place. What she told me is totally contrary to what chairman of the board has told us. Further investigation revealed the following. The Town of Fort Kent, which is bound by this very same ICMA Code of Ethics, same code. First of all, respectable town manager Susie Perty and police chief Tom Pelletier were both very happy to walk with Senator Susan Collins down their main street. My conclusion is this, that Facebook posts, you had no grounds to attack me the way you did. You have violated my rights to free speech. You have violated the select person's handbook on the Board of Conduct, the both of you. You have violated my rights, the both of you, to an executive session, which is very serious as a public employee, and I hope you understand that, and there will be consequences to that. You've, you've also violated the main statute pertaining to a privacy act. Elect, elected officials are not covered under main statute, under the Main torts claim act. Should a civil suit be brought against you, you are on your own, check out the manual. The elected officials are not at the same level as an employee, for example, as town manager. In a court of law, according to legal counsel, the judge would be looking for intent. Intent is what he's looking for. The intent to hurt, to harm, to humiliate, to embarrass, to which we are of the opinion that you have met these perfectly well. Secondly, this was supported by a pre-planned rehearsed speech by town manager Gary Picard. Because of your knowledge of the going-ons, which has been verified by a third selectman, the intent was there. You as well, once intent is proved in a court of law, are not covered by town attorneys or town funds. You are on your own. You, Mister Picard, in contrast to Doug Seer, have opened up the Town of Madawaska to yet another civil lawsuit. Read the MMA handbook, read on page one hundred and eighty-two, one hundred and eighty-three, one hundred and eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-five. Very clear, I understand it, you should be able to. If you read on page one hundred and eighty-seven, failure to reappoint with the evidence and testimony given by strictly legal opinion cited the MMA manual. This board is advised, based on case law, to act promptly and early in a situation disciplinary action is warranted. The accused are entitled to due process. To discuss, to counter, or to question is now your privilege. This board will be faced to take a vote, to take disciplinary action by way of placing a letter of discipline in your personnel file to the effect that you have violated a universally accepted code of ethics becoming of a town manager and has in so doing not met the expectations of the Board of Selectmen in the same realm. That's all I have on this one.
Could you restate that last statement that you just made, the last, last line?
To the effect of placing a letter of discipline in his personnel file to the effect that he has violated a universally accepted. That's just a, 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 a commonly basic code of ethics amongst decent people. And if you have forgotten what those people are, start talking to some older people, they'll educate you on that. We seem to have lost that in the world of today.
All I'm asking is for you to restate that.
Okay, he has violated a universally accepted code of ethics becoming of a town manager. And he, in so doing, not met the expectations of the board in this same realm or in this same arena. This board accept, expects the town manager to conduct his business, if you will, at an acceptable lo, level that the general public would deem to be acceptable.
And these comments are coming from where? This universal acceptance is, is, you're picking this up from what? Where's that coming from? This is your opinion?
From my hollow head.
All right, so it's your opinion?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. All right.
But I would ask each board member here, you, you want, you wanna air this out? You wanna poke fun at, at this guy, you wanna poke the sleeping bear, you just did, Mister Mano.
Listen, listen, you spoke your piece now, you spoke, you spoke your. Mister Daigle, you said your piece, now let these board members talk.
I'm not done.
Yes, you were done.
No.
Yes, you just made me aware you were done.
I never relinquished the floor.
Listen, Mister Daigle, you just advised this board, am I not correct that he said he was done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, do we have any, any comments here at this point?
Do we, do we need that to be a motion that he wants us to discipline so that we second and then?
Yes, yes, has to be by way of motion.
Have a discussion. So this is just a motion to discuss?
Yes, it's a motion to discuss.
Then I will motion for discussion.
Do we have a second?
I make a motion.
He made the motion, she's seconding.
So we've had the discussion, is there any discussion, the MMA manual says, and he has the opportunity of a rebuttal?
Well, in the present board.
Do we, do we have any comments now from the board members? Before I let Mister Picard speak. Mano?
Well, let me, let me regroup and rethink here. It's a lot of information. I don't, I really wish things could be different, and we have problems with communication amongst the town manager and the board. Something has to be rectified where we can somehow all get along and progress, because this is going nowhere. I mean, whether it's a true disciplinary action, it's against Mister Daigle. I don't know if it's town, board-wise. It's, it went and got to that point for you to, to bring it out as you felt so passionate about, you know, that he brought out on his personal Facebook.
The assault was a violation of the law, and that is what I am addressing here tonight.
Let her speak.
I, I understand your point, I really do, I, I get it, but.
May I speak?
No, she's, she's, she's thinking, let her speak, let her.
Well, I'm thinking, you can go and don't let me group my thinking in the meantime, and I'll interrupt if I have to.
That's why we do this stuff.
Anybody else?
I mean, I just, can I?
Yep.
So as, as you've obviously seen from all the other decisions I've made, and I, I go by facts, I go by my complaint, I go by paper. And I've been taking notes of some of the things you, you're saying, and, and you know what? If you could show me the piece of paper with something like this acceptable code of ethics that was violated, I'll read it over. But to, to throw out there this acceptable code of ethics because I, as an individual, believe that so-and-so should act in a certain way, and he doesn't, I can't ask Laurie to say, well, I think so-and-so didn't act the way I believe was right, um, so you should write him up for that. So if you could show me this acceptable code of ethics that
Okay.
has been accepted by the town manager when he accepted his position, then we can hold him accountable for that. I, I mean, you talked about intent, you, you talked about intent earlier. I could say that Doug intends to look at me nasty with those eyes he's making at me now, but that's my opinion of his intent. I believe that Doug is, he's got his intent, and it's, you know, innocent until proven guilty, and I can't assume that his intent was, was bad. I assume from what happened that night or from the initial conversation that the intent was not to harm you, to embarrass you, or to hurt you. I believe, and again, this is my opinion, that the intent was to get you to understand that attacking board members, attacking each other, attacking the town manager, attacking town employees, it's getting this town nowhere, because we've got budgets to worry about, we've got all kinds of things to worry about, and attacking each other in public and throwing each other under the bus in public is nobody's intent, nobody wants to do that. We all need to work together and, and believe that everybody here's intent is to work together. So the other option is, you said you talked about violating free speech and violating your, your, your rights. So everybody in this room has, has the, the, the right to free speech. Now, if I tell Mister Joe Blow in the audience here that you can't say that in public, or you are wrong to say that, it is just as much my free speech to tell him that as it is for him to say what he said. The mere fact that me telling him he was wrong with saying that, or that he shouldn't say that, is not actually blocking his right to free speech, it's telling him my opinion that he should not say that. Now, if I went ahead and I, he wanted to say something, and I stopped him, and I says, you can't talk, and I talk horrible every time, well, then maybe I am blocking his free speech. Or if I forced everybody to leave the room while he talks, well, maybe I am blocking his free speech. But just telling him, you are wrong with what you said, or you can't say that, that's not necessarily violating free speech. The whole Susan Collins, uh, thing, um, you know, hiding behind this code of ethics, I feel like if he would have violated those code of ethics, which he holds himself true to, he has pride in following these code of ethics, I feel that if he would have violated those code of ethics, even though I might believe that, you know what, Garrett, you should have gone, maybe I do believe that, okay? But if he stands behind his code of ethics, I would be just as pissed off at him for violating those code of, code of ethics and showing up, and me then saying, Garrett, you told me you followed these code of ethics, you said you follow these to a T. Why did you break this rule? So that's where I find it hard to say, even though I disagree that, hey, maybe he should have gone, or maybe we should have gone, or any other people should have gone, I do believe that we should have had presence there. I can't hold this man accountable for that, because he followed the black and white document, which, which all of us have had a copy of, which he has stated, this is what I follow, I, I'm almost there. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that you have said, and I, I, you know what? I don't disagree with everything, but I cannot reprimand somebody without a black and white, this is what he violated, and, and not. this is what he violated and, and not just as a Board of Selectmen, I'm allowed an executive session. All the research that I have done, please show me the documentation where I'm wrong, is as Board of Selectmen, we are not granted that right to have executive sessions. We're not even supposed to call each other out saying, Lori, you did this wrong in the last meeting. Unless it's clearly identified in the, in a document saying, we can't do this as a board. So as far as saying that we violated your right to an executive session, I've never seen anywhere where a Board of Selectmen is actually allowed that, 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 that thing.
It's in the MMA manual.
Before you continue, I'd like you to look at your approach to everything. And instead of saying, Lori, you told me this, or Madal, you told me that, or Jason, you said this. Let's stop throwing each other under the bus. Let's stop trying to make this huge deal out of everything. Let's deal with actual black and white facts of vi, of things that were violated, things that were done wrong. And then I'll gladly look them over and say, yep, let's, let's do something about that. So I'm not saying you're wrong in everything you're saying. I'm just saying, when you, when you approach us with stuff like he violated this.
Yep.
Make sure it's not just an opinion where I think this, that we, we have the legal documentation.
Mr. Daigle, you had the floor a while ago, let, let the other board members speak.
He asked him a question to find something and you found it. Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes. And. Okay, in the town handbook, shall not speak disrespectfully of any member of the board, the public, committee members, employees of the town of Manawaska by making offensive, insulting, threatening, insolent, slanderous, obscene remarks of whom become, who becomes boisterous or who makes threats against any person or against public order and security. Now, you want to see stuff in black and white. Now, what they, what those two carried out against me on that night violates this. There's, I, I don't remember where it is. Let me.
And I'm not saying you don't have it yet. I'm just saying, show me this thing so I, I have something to go on.
Well, well, this is part of it.
Right.
I was accused, I was accused a while back of coming to the meetings and shooting from the hip. I don't shoot from the hip. It's all in here and I will find it. I have found it in, in the, and, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. And a second part of it is the wrong information that we just got again. This is continual, it goes on and, and you sit here by my side and, and you're asking me that we need to work together. We need to work together. Well, let me point out to this entire board that there's this continual call to work together. But what happens behind the scenes? Our attacks that these two people planned on me on that night. The other part of the executive session that I asked for here tonight was to deal with their second little conspiracy to throw me under the bus a second time. Where I posted something that wasn't to Mr. Picard's liking and he decided to call in two selectmen to be talking about. He had no grounds to be talking about that. And I told him to his face, if you don't like the posts, how is it that you tell us that you're off of Facebook? You're off of Facebook. But yet every time I post something that doesn't tickle your fancy and ruffles your feathers, that you're on the horn at eight o'clock in the morning calling selectmen to come to your rescue. Now, what happened that morning is that you were discussing that and the third person that you called in to try to bring in as an ally, for whatever reason, that person panicked and called me and spilled the beans. Told me what was going on.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, so.
Is it my turn?
In, in finishing what I was asking, take, take what you just showed me there, that, that documentation that you violated. Turn that into a motion and we can all as a board discuss that one item. Instead of this big blanket.
We, we, we have a disciplinary motion on the floor. We had a second, I would like my turn.
Go ahead.
Please.
Yes.
Now, first off, I'm gonna start backwards. The third person that he called in called you.
Yes.
Because he asked me to call you. And he said, please let Dan know.
Were you the third person?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
Come on, Dan, Dan, I don't have secrets, okay? I, I, it's all good. I, we discussed it and honestly, I said, no, we're not gonna go through this again. It's just gonna be a fight. And Doug says, well, you know, let Dan know that we talked about it and call him. I called you to see if you could come to a meeting that day, do you remember that? And I hung up the phone. Dude, we had a meeting at lunchtime. I called you, was it an emergency meeting, I think, or something? I called you, that's, I called you for that reason. And I said, and I was still there with them. And I said, can you come to this meeting at such and such a time, whatever? And I got off the phone with you and Doug said, you didn't tell Dan? I don't want to blindside him, I would like to talk to him about that. I'd like to talk to him about the post, but I don't call him. So I called you back at his direction. So there was nothing sneaky about it. He wanted you to know.
Why were you ever discussing that? You have no grounds at all for discussing that. None whatsoever.
We were discussing the COVID, right? We were discussing the COVID closure, okay?
COVID, what's COVID got to do with my, my Facebook post?
Because we, that's why I was there. We were talking about could we have a meeting to talk about the town office because I had some concerns. So we said, okay, let's see if we can get everybody together for a meeting so we can discuss as a board. And then, yes, Gary admitted to you in the last meeting, he brought that post up. We have every right to discuss a Facebook post. We have every right to have that conversation. How does that violate your rights?
You did not take any action, so legally that would not stand in a court of law. It would not.
I, I don't even know what you're saying, Dan.
I, I don't understand that at all.
We just had a conversation about it. I, I don't even know.
Why was, my question is, why was it ever a subject of, a topic of conversation?
Because it's offensive. And you don't realize sometimes how much it offends people, it hurts people. So we were talking about it.
If you put your name on any ballot or if you accept any public job, I've been clear in your little brain and your little head that you have deliberately posted a target on your back for people to shoot at. So get ready.
Don't you put a post out there for comments and for people to see and for people to discuss?
Listen, I've told you people repeatedly, if you don't like what you see on Facebook, there's two feet doms. You can press off or block.
We're not gonna take, we cannot take disciplinary action because he discussed a Facebook post. I don't like one, okay?
No, 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 but I just, I just want that, I just want to reaffirm to this board that there's going ons behind the scenes, trying to take down selectman Danny Daigle in any way we can.
Well, I.
That's my point.
And I'm making the point that I was the third person and I'm the one who called you because he asked me to call you.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. But my point is that they violated the law, okay?
Well, that's.
And that they are continually in a little conspiracy. Their little secret meetings, they go on every morning. They go on every morning.
Can we, can we talk about the disciplinary motion?
Yes, sure.
Isn't that why we're here, right?
Yes.
Alright, so, um, I don't know about the whole, um, I had no idea thing or I don't know if that one comes from me. Um, I am gonna say this and, and I'm extremely disappointed in this entire war. Because we have failed. We have failed as a group and that ambush, Dan. You were continually putting out posts that were, you wanted to discharge the town manager, you, you wanted him out. The posts were accusing us of corruption. You and, you and I have had many conversations about, and it's all, like, these are all conversations you and I have had, right? So it's, this is not a surprise. You've accused us of corruption and all kinds of things. And so that particular day when Doug brought that out, we all knew. And anyone who told you they had no idea this was going on at all, that's not even true. And I'm the one who told you. We all knew. I didn't know how Doug was going to address it because the truth is, he stood up and she stood up and everybody wanted to address it as a board. And he decided on his own to go ahead and dress it himself so he would take the heat.
There was no conspiracy.
There was no conspiracy to hurt you. He wanted to let you know that your posts were.
You guys, you guys are as good as Donald Trump with your little cover-ups.
Offensive, Dan, I told you this from the beginning. You, you even cited the date, we all three knew. So my point is to.
You see Doug, Dan.
My, my whole point is, I, I, I want to finish here.
Yep, go ahead.
Alright?
Sorry.
So my whole point is that as an organization and as a board, we are supposed to be creating an atmosphere for our employees to be successful. This board has not done that. We've not given Gary expectations to meet, yet we're hounding him. He's not meeting the expectations. Yet in the very first meeting, I wanted to talk about expectations and we had one thing. Oh, let's make a manager's report and let's have him answer our phone calls. Nobody said a freaking word about what your expectations were. This board didn't pick up any direction as a group. He said, let's move the town forward. The town wants change? We didn't do a damn thing. We didn't talk about it. We didn't say, oh, let's work on how we're gonna change the town and move it forward. Instead, people stand back and they pick and they pick and, and, and the whole goal of the change that a lot of people want is to get Gary out and replace him. I, I don't even know how as a board we think we can be successful if we can't even work as a group. And how can we make our employees successful? And how can we expect any employee to be successful? That whole speech that he gave at the end of that meeting was allowed. He was given the floor by the chair and the three of us sat there and let him do it. So there's no way I'm going to step up and try to vote to discipline him for something that we allowed. You want to be pissed at us, you want to throw stuff at me, you can do all of that, but you're not gonna discipline an employee for something his boss has allowed him to do and support it because this was causing a lot of problems within the organization. And then as far as the other three people standing up, I had asked for specifically Ross to be there because we were discussing the, um, enforcement of COVID masks. And he wasn't coming to that meeting and I asked Eric, could you please have Ross come in case we have to talk about enforcement? I would like to talk to him about it, okay? I don't know why Jim was there and Eric was there to address us on, on that, there was a, an employee travel thing with, with COVID. And they never stood up and said they supported Gary. They stood up and said they supported the rest of the board that remained. So I just want to make that a point. I do not expect any employee to be badgered or abused or yelled at or screamed at. I've never had a boss that has, 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 you know, been in my face all the time with a finger. I, I've had bosses that I've said, what can I do to help? Show me what I can do. And that's the kind of person that I am and that's, I think it's my job to help him be successful. And if I can't do that, then it's on me. And I am not gonna give up on him until I have done everything I can do. And I'm sorry, but this board, like I said, we're not working together. We're not leading by example. We're not moving forward. I think Gary's a good administrator. Is he perfect? Absolutely not. Does he have issues? Him and I do not always get along and in the beginning of this whole thing, I pretty much think if he could have kicked me out, he would have. But we're making it work and he works every day, he shows up. I, I, I just, so no, I, I'm sorry, but once the vote, once it's time to vote, I am, I am not disciplining him for something that is our fault. I'm done, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Madal, you, we had kind of.
Well, the only, well, the only thing that I have to say is, when it came time to Senator Collins, I had no idea that you were not permitted to be part of because of this association. When I talk about communication, this is what I, you could have spilled off an email because I'm part of this or I am not allowed permissible to participate. It saves, I was aggravated because I had no clue. So in the future, they save communicating. It doesn't sound like much, shoot an email. And that saves a lot of problems, a lot of misunderstandings and a lot of barriers, for me anyway.
If I may.
Before, before you start, Gary, you know, I, I need to address Dan here. You are certainly with the idea that some of us here are here to get you.
Well, your repeated little meetings and your assaults on me prove it.
But you know, you're assuming something here. You're assuming that every time, every, listen to me. Every time that we get together that we are talking about you. And that is not the case. It is the furthest from what we normally discuss. Normally, when I want to discuss something with you, I will bring it up to you. There's never a conspiracy here. We never talk directly about you other than a night or two before I addressed you directly at our board meeting, which every one of these members here were after me to find out how we were gonna address this issue that you had posted on, on social media that was really reprehensible. And they wanted us to do, to have action. They wanted all of us to say something to you. They wanted to censure you.
Would you not done it in private?
Just listen for a second.
Politely?
It was on my own. Not a one knew what I was going to say. So when you said that this was planned and somebody knew what I was gonna say, he didn't know, nor did he, nor the she, nor the chi. Not a one other than myself. Because I knew how this was gonna get dealt. I knew what this was gonna do.
They didn't know what you were gonna say, but they knew what you were gonna do the exact same way as when I put it on the agenda, ten and eleven, to come here into executive session to discipline. Nobody knew what I was gonna say, but they knew what I was gonna do.
All I'm pointing out to you is, there was no conspiracy. There was no discussion.
No conspiracy.
At all.
You're awesome.
None of them knew a thing about what was going on. They came out and, 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 and approved what this board was doing on their own. We never, I never asked for any of them to be here. I never spoke to Gary about this, nor did Lori. She was after me that morning. How, or what were you gonna say?
Oh, you mean the department heads. Sorry, I lost you for a minute.
No, I, I, I'm talking about the board itself and the department.
Mister Chairman.
Listen, so, so, so.
I'm not stupid. I know that this is going. Mister Chairman, the clap is going. I'm tired, I did not.
Listen, listen.
No, put the little hammer away.
Listen, you spoke a while ago.
No, no, I'm not.
You had your piece. Yes, you did.
No.
I had the floor.
We're gonna terminate this discussion. We're gonna terminate this discussion here now.
Order, Mr. Daigle. Mr. Daigle.
And we're gonna move on to the next.
I have made you aware, there is no conspiracy. There was never any discussion. It was never brought up at all.
She just testified that there was.
Discussion about how, but not the way I did it.
The way you did it.
The way I did it. She was waiting for me to have something manifested for all of us to sign. We were all to sign.
Is this how it goes? They, they load the gun and they give it to you. The other one points it, they say, okay, he's in the sights. Hold the trigger.
Mister Daigle, you know, you're making a show here. You're putting a show, you are putting a show.
I'm exposing the facts.
I am telling you, they wanted this censure. They wanted, that, that's the process they wanted to go. That was the discussion. How I handled that, that issue.
You have no grounds. You have no grounds. You have no grounds.
Can I say something?
Yep, go ahead.
You say exposing the facts and, and not, and making it, you're not making a show, you're just exposing the facts. Just today, you had a post.
Yeah.
Okay?
Oh, I have multiple today.
People were complaining that the agenda was not made available to the public, okay?
Yeah.
And instead of doing like I did and says, here are the links, here are the agenda, you added fuel to the fire and you says conspiracy.
Mister Boucher, I have no technological skills and will allow me to do that.
But you knew the agenda was available. You know as a Board of Selectmen that the agenda is available at least seven days before the meeting.
I, in the post today, did I not tell Kelsey Zian to call the town manager for the, for the agenda? Did I or did I not? Yes or no?
After the fact.
Not after the fact. She posted, where's the agenda? And I didn't know how to forward it to her email. All I had is the physical copy and I don't have it in my phone. I don't know how to send that to her. I responded, not after the fact. The very next, the very next line under Kelsey Zian's post was call, call the town manager for the agenda. Yes, sir. You're not gonna paint him to be a liar.
Trying to paint Trump to be a liar, just.
Well, you said it after the fact.
You know, before I allow Mr. Picard to speak, I, I want to make a statement here to the public that what Mr. Daigle has tried to inform you this evening has really, uh, has really given you information that this board does not share at all. That information that he is putting out is not the way this board thinks. Um, we don't act in the way that he is describing.
No, because he's a criminal.
And there is nothing here that he has said tonight that makes any sense as far as this board is concerned. I mean, he is discussing his personal issues, his personal vendettas, and this board doesn't act in that way. We are trying to find out the exact truth and certainly we didn't hear much of it here this evening. Go ahead, Mr. Picard.
Alright, so I wanna I wanna clarify for the board, Manao, to your your suggestion, yes, can always do a bit of harder communicating. Uh but I I want, I I need you to know that when the request was made for me to join, I invited Doug and I invited Dan. We sat down in the boardroom together and I cannot be at this board at at this uh wait, to meet Susan Collins because it's campaign and it violates my code of ethics. But the two of you can. So they they were notified. Okay, I could have notified the rest of you.
That's my fault. That's my only fault.
Okay? But 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 I I I I was halfway there because there were others that that were notified, other board members too.
But had I know
Yeah.
in my case, I would have eliminated like, okay, then why did he go? It doesn't make any sense. And then that's my point of it's important to communicate.
Yeah, yeah, I follow.
That would just fine. That would just do with all five of us. So that it's everybody knows what's going on and you don't walk around saying, well, I didn't know what's happening, then I went first. That's my only problem.
Had I had I known, it would have been a federal case, I I certainly would have brought it to your attention, but but I I think that
Mm-hmm. And I'm sorry for it.
in the context that you you would assume that it's not going to be an issue, you don't notify the whole board and I guess.
I know, but better safe than sorry. And as stupid as it may sound, just shoot out an email saying, this is why I came forward.
I agree.
This is what's happening. I'd rather have a thousand emails and know what's going on than not have any. That's all. I'm sorry I took your time.
Okay. Uh nu- number two, uh I wanna say that at the at the board meeting where Mr. Daigle submitted a letter of resignation, I did not have a rehearsed speech. If you go back and you look at the camera, you won't see looking at a paper. Okay, uh from notes to what I'm going to say. I I I I don't memorize things very well. I'd be lucky, you know, be able to memorize two sentences anytime. I spoke from my heart and I spoke out loud and when three three department heads who were there like Miss Lori, uh I I thank her for clarifying that. They did not speak. Okay? On my behalf, at me asking them to be there, that did not happen. Now, I have concern that I I I am dismayed to see how this board is is being trying to, uh like I said in my last meeting, make it work. Twisting yourself into pretzels is what I said, okay? To try, to try, okay? But it it's hard. This board is having a hard time. We have a lot of important work to do. And it's not my job to to whip this board. I work for you. You guys need to govern yourselves, okay? But I try to the extent that I can to give you the information that you need and make informed decisions, okay, without overstepping. Now, uh in regards to comments on Facebook made by select people against town employees, whether or not it crosses a legal line, if it's not been determined, probably not, but I can say that I find it personally offensive. Okay? For our leaders of our town, our town fathers, okay, to disparage some of my my staff and to disparage me, quite frankly. And it's not the place, this board needs to lead by example. Okay? To Mr. Yang's comment about not being technologically savvy and not being able to share things, uh the way that others can. Well, you know, Mr. Daigle took some time to take pictures of rats or mice on Facebook and and it basically insinuated there are rats. Rats. Okay, ratting out to Governor Mills. And posting it on social media. Boy, you gotta, I think you gotta be pretty technologically savvy to do that, okay? So as a screenshot, excuse me, as far as agenda item, that somebody would have needed because you can't forward an agenda item, you could have taken your safe camera and took a picture of the agenda and sent sent it to Miss, to the lady that asked for it.
How? I don't have her on Messenger. How would I send that to her? How would I send that to her?
You you could have posted that picture to to Facebook, just like you did the mice.
Oh. No, no, the mice go from my screenshot onto onto my Facebook page, my personal Facebook page.
Okay, Mr. Mr. I I will go back and I will point you back into into a uh where there's a little bit of hypocrisy here, uh going back to when Mr. Don Chasse was still a board chairman and I was being smeared and dragged by another town employees, okay? And the worst ways imaginable played on Facebook for every person who has a social media account in the St. John Valley, the state of Maine, wherever, okay? To see the worst, the god awful things and have been accused of the worst things. Okay, and Mr. Don Chasse stood up and got out from behind the bench and stood as a citizen and spoke on behalf of his employees and me and bullying. And you know what? Mr. Daigle was there in the audience that day as a citizen and felt compelled to support Mr. Don. And said the town needed to do better for their employees. They're not doing enough. I think if you go back and you watch the camera that you keep referring to, you'll find that you said those very things. I have the floor. I have the floor.
Mr. Mr. He said, no, he has the floor.
Whoa, okay? So I come to work every day. I come to work every, I come to work every day through it all. Through the worst of the worst, I have, I I have staff who question why I even continue to do it.
You're tough.
Okay, and as far and as far as being on Facebook, no, I'm not on Facebook.
I do what I'm saying.
Over a year now, okay? But you know what? People say, people, yeah, my my Facebook account deactivated.
You're good. You're good. You know, Mr. Daigle, those comments again.
My Facebook account has been deactivated. Okay, but people send me stuff. I have Messenger and and I have text and people text me when they see something that they think I shouldn't see from my own eyes, they send it to me because they care and they want me to have facts to defend myself. Okay, Mr. Daigle?
Yeah.
So please, please, before you make accusations, you better bring some facts to the table. Okay, before you make accusations, you better bring some facts to the table.
Mr. Chairman, you done? Are you done, Mr. Daigle? You done?
Are you all set?
Yes.
Yes, you have.
You repeatedly tell me, bring me facts, bring me facts. I bring you all the facts, you sweep them under the table and you think it's funny. I'm gonna tell you something, uh, Mr. Chairman. I have repeatedly tried to 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 work some situations out and 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 I'm, I I am continually fed a bunch of lies, lies and 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 you expect the level of trust to be there. Okay, so uh I'm gonna ask you.
Would you, would you care to ask anybody on this board right now?
No, I have the floor. Out of order.
Who do you think is speaking? Who is speaking you?
Out of order. Out of order.
You know, Mr. Daigle.
Out of order. You are out of order, Mr. Chairman. I have the floor.
I will give you the floor for now.
No, no, I have the floor presently.
Mr. Daigle.
These meetings are governed by Robert's Rules of Order. If you've never read the book, it would pay you well. It would serve you well to read Robert's Rules of Order. I have the floor and I'm addressing you, Mr. Chairman, at the moment. I am gonna ask you, Chairman, to take a vote and obviously I know what the outcome is, but let's just go through the formality and I'm gonna address my last issue here tonight uh of disciplinary reaction uh on Mr. Picard for another issue, but we would put this one to rest because it's going nowhere. I bring the facts, uh I get lied to, uh so could you please take a vote and let's get to the other one? There's some people here that are tired. Manao is about to fall asleep on her chair. Uh so please take a vote and let's get this one behind us and the next one.
We are at a point of voting whether we are going to discipline uh Mr. Picard for uh what Mr. Daigle has described. Can I have a vote at this time? Do we agree to discipline Mr. Picard? Does any vote, anybody vote in favor?
I make a motion to discipline.
You did make the motion, Manao seconded, so we just need to vote.
Okay. Alright, so you need to vote on it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking for right now. I'm asking for the vote. Does anybody agree to discipline?
Yes, I do. All those opposed?
And those that are opposed?
Those opposed. Okay, thank you. The next one.
So 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 we had.
I'll see Gary, four to one. Thank you for.
I guess, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure because I didn't see.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one. Last week, you're well aware of the situation, the dude, you spent an entire day on this. Uh, Mr. Picard allowed town equipment, a payloader and two trucks. I've got it all on video in here again, but but no, Mr. Daigle's a liar. Mr. Daigle's a liar. He doesn't bring any facts. I have all the video in here. So I just sat in my truck watching this and Mr. Picard was within a hundred feet of me. I took my phone and I said, uh, I would like an explanation as to why there's two town trucks and a payloader removing snow out of a private parking lot that you have no business in. And he said, I don't have time for your nonsense and if you don't like it, you call the chairman. Bang, he hung up the phone on me. That is insubordination and if this board does not support disciplinary action for insubordination, for a town manager to hang up the phone when a town selectman is informing him of illegal activity. They were dumping snow. They've been dumping snow on that property since November twelve. And they were notified on January five saying, well, they they weren't aware. Mr. Picard is the one that signed off on the contract. He lies to a selectman, says, well, we have, the town has first options to buy that. Not true. The family, a very close family relative holds a letter of first refusal from Gary Picard, but yet he tells a board member, we have first dibs on that property anyway. Then he says, well, we weren't aware that the contract was expired. It was voted on at a board of selectmen meeting. He tries to cover by saying that Kevin Newby was not aware that the contract had expired, but yet Kevin Newby was at the meeting where they voted not to continue the contract that had been good for many, many years. But yet, again, a personal vendetta, but Mr. Daigle's half crazy and it's a conspiracy theory that, but Mr. Picard thought he was gonna put the stick to the Daigle family and it it will in effect penalize the La Joie Funeral Home in in not having that parking area uh cleaned off like it was for years and years in exchange for the tax. It was an, it was an agreement, a contract that was in standing for over twenty years. And Mr. Picard, all of a sudden, decides that this is no good for the town anymore and it's not a worthwhile venture. And now with the uh Pickle Park out in front of Bagel Oil, uh we're gonna need, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have the, the, one of the deciding factors for that Pickle Park was we're gonna have ice sculptures in the winter and thousands of people are gonna come. Is that is that this weekend or next weekend, the ice sculptures? Oh, they're not coming? Okay.
Are you, are you giving him the floor now?
No, no, I'm not done.
Were you were asking him a question?
That's a yes or no. That's not giving him the floor. No.
Really?
Anyway, anyway. So you've been using that area and you allowed the town trucks and the payloader to clean all that that off and when you got busted, you hung up the telephone. I'm not gonna go into it any further because it goes way beyond that, where all day you ran around, tried to cover your tracks. At three thirty in the afternoon, you called Annette Daigle in Florida, trying to patch up the whole thing. I got a call immediately after. I got all the details. So don't try to lie to me here tonight. I know the intricate details of your movements and of your lies. And I've 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 had it with your lies, Mr. Picard. We're not gonna deal with lies anymore. I'm gonna call you out each and every time. I will point out the facts. Now, the only thing I want here, Mr. Chairman, I want, I make a motion, make a motion to discipline Gary Picard for insubordination for hanging up the phone on me. Do we have a second?
I will ask for the second. Thank you.
I second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Picard.
Okay, so I would love to hear your facts of the conversation with the owner of the parking lot. I mean, I, please share them with the board. I'm okay with you sharing them with the board. If there's a big cover up, please explain it to them because I am deserving of your disciplinary action and I think that they should know what it is. What what is it that that I said and did? What's the cover up? The cover my ass? Please explain it to them.
Are we, are we not dealing here specifically with insubordination of the town manager hanging up on one of his supervisors? That is, that is the issue here right now. The discussion about what took place in the in the parking lot. As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, I ask for you to put that discussion immediately, right now, on the agenda for next board meeting, the discussions and the details on the parking lot that they not only pushed a whole bunch of town snow from between the funeral home and the town office for a period of a month and a half, that they pushed all of that snow onto private property, onto private property with no permission to do so. And a month and a half later, they decide to go clean it up with town equipment on private property and not only to pick up what the town has put there, but Liza La Joie, who had permission from landowner Annette Daigle, who now is in Florida, Liza La Joie had permission from Annette Daigle to hire an independent contractor to plow and gravel a short section behind the funeral home. So for a month and a half, not only the town of Madawaska taking all their snow and going to dump it on a private parking lot without permission, without permission, but they also took all the snow that the independent contractor, who had mounted his snow with the town snow, the town, out of the kindness of their heart, went and cleaned up that whole mess for the contractor. They cleaned the entire parking lot on private property with town equipment, which we all know is not an allowed function. But the issue at hand here, Mr. Chairman, right now, does not go into that arena. The issue at hand here is disciplined, let me finish.
I understand. I understand.
Out of order. Is the issue at hand, the motion on the floor, is to discipline the town manager for insubordination for hanging up the telephone on his boss. The motion has been seconded and I look for a vote on this matter.
Well, we have a discussion.
Well, there's a discussion further, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Picard. Yep.
So again, I ask for you, I stand accused. I stand for the fact. I wanna know what the, this board needs to know.
Needs to know what?
What the cover up is. What what is it, the conversation that I have with.
Mr. Picard, I just finished telling you, I just finished telling you, we're not dealing with that tonight. We're dealing with the insubordination.
So I said.
We're dealing with the insubordination, Mr. Picard.
Ah, we have the floor.
You have the floor.
I I circulated to the board just now, a while ago, okay, the town manager plan. And the town manager plan states that the board acts as a body. As a body. A board member cannot call the town manager and issue directives, nor yell at the town, at at the town.
I never yelled at you.
I have the floor. You yelled at me on the phone, Dan. Okay, and you know what I did, Dan?
You hung up the phone. That's what you did.
It was an issue that you needed to take up with the board chair and the vice chair and I directed that. I I told you that and I hung up the phone and I called immediately. I called immediately the chair and the vice chair and I informed them of what happened. And now, I also asked the staff to call the public works director to come over so we can cease working when we were not supposed to be working. Now,
That has nothing to do with what's on the floor. That has nothing, Mr. Chairman, that has nothing to do with what's on the floor.
Board, the board. Board acts. The board acts as a body. The board acts as a body. We in Madawaska, many, many years ago, the townspeople adopted the town manager former government that that Lori agreed to. Okay, you act as a body and it's, and you cannot issue directives directly to the town manager or his employees or her employees, okay? I have the floor and and let me explain to you why we have this form of government. If the townspeople doesn't want, don't want the town manager former government, they can do away with it. They don't need a town manager. Then it'll be all on you guys to make decisions all over the next board. Now,
Wrong.
Let let me explain to you a situation, why the town manager former government works and why a board member can't be calling a town manager and and issuing directives. If if a situation arises. if a situation arises that, that requires, listen, listen to me. Well, one person, one board member would handle it one way, and the board member saying, you need to handle it like this. And I had another board member telling me, no, 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 you need to handle it like this, you do it like this, you do it like that. I, I am going to be
There's a law violation, it's your duty to stop it immediately.
I am going to be insubordinate to one of those two board members, because I defy, I was insubordinate, and that's why the board acts as a body.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we are addressing
So, so I understand.
So, so let me
We're addressing one issue.
I'm not done. So, since you, you do not, I am not going to wait another, for another board meeting for the accusations for to swirl in the townspeople who are watching this meeting.
We're not staying here until midnight. I'm not.
You said you were, you're gonna do it, so I'll try.
Okay, alright.
For you, I'll do it, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm not done, I'm not done. I stand here accused. I stand here accused, and I wanna know what the accusations are, 'cause, and if you want, if you don't want to, say what they, what the big conspiracy is, the big cover-up is, then, then I know what it is. I will tell you what it is.
No, you'll know at the next meeting.
No, no, I, we're gonna talk about it right now.
No, 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 we don't have time for that.
Did you, did you tell
We're, we're gonna take care of the, we're gonna take care of the motion.
Did you tell other board members that I tried to coerce the owner of that property into backdating, signing a backdated agreement to cover my ass?
You were trying to
Did, did
Where it, what, we are addressing
Did you, did you?
We are addressing the matter on the floor, correct?
Because, because, Mr. Daigle, that would be egregious. That would be very wrong. Mr. Daigle, please, when I called Annette Daigle
Why did you call Annette Daigle? Why did you? Because you were guilty of piling a month and a half of snow on her property without any permission. That's why you called Annette Daigle, you were backpedaling, you called all of the selectmen, you called Doug immediately. You went down with Doug and Kevin Doobie behind the police sta, behind the, uh, we call it the police station, because Longby, you, you were still in your diapers back then, we were playing in the jail downstairs there, behind the town office. And you went down there with Doug Sier and Kevin Doobie, and then, when I pulled up around, the first thing that the chairman tells me, he says, well, well, Dan, well, we, we, uh, we, we measured, well, we just pasted it off and, uh, we're on our property. What are you talking about? Dan, I never said anything like that. I said, we were measuring the property. And you said, you certainly don't own that property down there. That's right, that's what I told you. That's exactly, and they ended there. You're on your property there. I'm not talking about it, do what you like. So, so why those comments that you're just making? Because that's what you told me. I just told you what I said. Anyway.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I, may I answer this question? What I was doing calling Annette Daigle? What was the nature of the call? Called to apologize.
Look, that's not the issue on the floor. That's not the issue on the floor, correct?
No, 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 I asked the question, and I called to apologize. And you know what, Mr. Daigle?
Right.
Because, because I knew in my heart, okay?
Oh, your heart?
Because I knew in my heart that there was probably going to be s- some sort of conspiracy to that phone call. You know what I did? I asked the board chair and the finance director to sit in on that conference call. So you better be careful, you better be careful what your allegations are, Mr. Daigle.
Why were they, they pushing snow there for a month and a half, right behind your office with Daigle?
Mr. Daigle.
A month and a half, and Daigle never said boo, and you knew about it, you knew the contract was expired,
You were I'm not
and, but it was also convenient for you.
And, and let's talk
No, no, I'm trying.
Let's, let's talk, let's talk about the agreement.
Look, I'm not very pretty, but I ain't stupid.
Let's talk about the agreement.
No, no, we're talking about discipline right now.
The board, the No, no, because it's in the context of this whole thing, because you, 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 you speak
No, we're talking about insubordination. We're talking about insubordination.
Mr. Chair, please, please.
Please, Mr. Daigle, let him finish.
He is finished.
So the board knows. Okay, for your, for your decision-making process here today, the nature of the, the parking lot agreement in two thousand and, it was my predecessor and the board amended the parking lot agreement to basically give the town the right, the first refusal to buy that property. Okay, that was, that was how the spirit of that, that agreement changed from
And you refused that.
Keep going.
Okay, and those agreements were two, were two years at a time, expiring in June 2020, the last one. Okay, last, in 2019, Ms. Daigle approached the town and said, I, I want to sell the property, and you have the right to first refusal. So, I have a potential buyer, okay, and the buyer has offered me forty thousand dollars. But you have the right to purchase the property for forty thousand dollars. So that prompted a discussion by the board. The board was made aware. And the board said, we don't, we are not interested in the property for this price. And there was discussions then at the time also that the board was not inclined to, to continue to renew the agreement, because we felt like the, the town didn't need it no more. Okay? Now, there was no motion not to renew the agreement. The board never acted on not renewing the agreement. The board let the old agreement expire, because the board's understanding was the property was going to be sold anyway. Okay? Now, I, I have a, a, a big concern about accusations that were made that I asked Ms. Daigle to backdate an agreement to cover my ass.
I never said that.
Well, you know what, there are two board members here that were pretty likely
Not to backdate, no, no.
Board members, please.
Oh.
I've been informed.
Dan, you, listen, you said that in front of me, and I
Retroactive.
Oh, well, retroactive.
Retroactive.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you better be sorry.
If I said Yeah, no, if I said backdating
Retroactive is not backdating a contract. If you're so smart, if you're so smart, you should know the difference.
E- either way, I went to him, listen to me, either way, I went to him and I asked him, did he notice?
No, 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 no. Well, of course, you always run to him, you always run to him.
I wanted to know if he really, really did that.
You always run to him. Mr. Chairman, we have, we have something on the floor, we have a motion.
He never
Invoted and seconded.
Are you, are, are we?
May, may I, may I just point out? Okay, that Mr. Daigle just acknowledged, just acknowledged that he did exactly that. That he did ask
No, I did not.
He, he just did, and, and made the record, please show, that when I had that conference call, that I had two witnesses to that conversation, two witnesses to that conversation. I, I'm done, I'm done with my, I've given my
There you are, yes, Laurie.
Okay, so, when Dan told me that, I was pissed off, and I was very upset about the hanging up. And I went to him, and, and you know this, I, I actually told all of you, I spent, I don't know, maybe a half hour, kind of babasing Gary, I guess, and saying, you know, like, this doesn't even make sense to me. I was very upset with him about that, and I wanted to confront him. And then I found out that none of that was part of that conversation, so I dropped it. So, if that wasn't part of the conversation, I, I mean, it, it doesn't, I, I don't know, like, who, how, what I believe anymore.
Whatever. You have a motion on the floor, it's been, uh, motion made, seconded.
Yes, we have a motion on the floor, did we have, did we have a second? Was there a second to that?
No, a second, a second.
Alright, we've, we've had the discussion, so
Seconded. Or to put a letter in his file of disciplinary nature for insubordination for hanging up on a town selectman when the town selectman
Is anybody, Mr. Daigle, let me do the, let me finish.
No, no, I, I have the floor, I'm talking to you right now, and you're gonna listen, you're gonna listen till I'm done talking.
You're, you're making, you're making this argument for
No, you're gonna listen to me. He is telling you that I was making mandates and order. I asked him, I want an explanation as to why there's two town trucks and a town payloader cleaning a private parking. He said, I don't have time for your nonsense. If you have a problem with that, call the board or vice chair, the, the chair or the vice chair, and he hung up the phone on me. I never yelled at him. So anyway, you have a motion on the floor, seconded, you are now faced with a
Is anybody in favor of disciplining, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Yes. So, with what Dan said, I just wanna put this out there before we vote, that if there was clear proof, and right now, it's, it's his word against his. If there was clear proof and, and that you spoke to him nor, normal voice, and he said that, and he hung, let me finish, and he hung up. I could understand maybe giving him a verbal, saying, hey, hey, you shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't be hanging up on town, on board selectmen. And then to behold, there's a process to follow, going to the, the, the board chair, and we get this all solved and resolved, so it doesn't happen again. But because it's, it's hearsay, and I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm not saying you're lying, and I'm not saying he's lying. I'm saying there's no clear proof or education, and all we're talking about is the hanging up. We're not talking about whether the parking lot being cleaned is wrong or not. There's no clear indication that either of you are telling the truth or lying. I can't vote yes, saying, let's put a letter in his, in his file without clear indication that
I knew clearly that you wouldn't.
Well, Dan, do you want me to go on here? Doug called me an a-hole yesterday, let's write him out. Who are you gonna believe?
Jason.
You need facts, Dan, you can't write somebody up for, for
Can I ask you a question?
No, I was gonna address after, okay, go ahead.
Did you ask Gary Picard if he hung up the phone on me?
Yes, I did.
What did he say?
He said he didn't, because you screamed at him.
Okay, alright.
Well, that's, I know that before. That's what I'm saying, Dan, let's do this the right way, let's talk about stuff like this. Except just right now, okay?
We now have con- confirmation that the town manager, that boy right there, hung up the phone on, on a, a selectman
Okay.
And called him to ask him a very simple question.
Okay.
Okay, and he hung up on me.
So, so now So now, my question to my know is, do you, do you know if Gary yelled at him or not?
Well, that I don't know, I'm the one, but what he told me, that I don't
Okay. Doug, do you know if Gary yelled at him or not?
I don't.
Laurie, do you know if Gary yelled at him or not?
And Gary yelled at him?
Uh, sorry.
He yelled at
They, they yelled at him.
That I don't know.
No, I, I don't know that.
Okay, you don't know that. So, show me now where you did not yell at him, and he just hung up on you. If, if, if you called me yelling and screaming at me, I can guarantee you I'm not having a conversation with you. Do you wanna have a conversation with me? Let's have a, a man-to-man, one-to-one conversation.
I am telling you that I did not yell at him, and if that's not good enough for you, selectmen, Bouche, I feel very sorry for you. I really do. The question is, did he hang up the phone on his supervisor? Did he or didn't he? That's the question you're faced with, right?
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One thing, I work for the board. I don't work for one particular board member, that the board acts as a body. Keep that in mind.
Yep.
For me, it doesn't really have a lot to do with, um, the hang, this, the whole situation for me is upsetting. I realize there's a specific motion on the floor and that we have to vote on. But how much infighting and arguing and disruption do we all have to go through before we can make this work as a board, okay? And, and right here, this, this tells me that, you know, we're, we're as a board in trouble here, okay?
Got the wood order in the can.
Because, this isn't, Dan, let me, let me finish, okay?
Sorry.
How much, how much, and, and you are, you already know where I stand. I, we've already talked, we've already talked, so I'm not surprising you with anything.
I know where you're standing. Nope, never have.
Um, and like I said, I was, I was extremely pissed off at Gary. I, I kind of, you know, wasn't that nice to him, and, um, I feel like as a board, we failed our employees in this insubordination thing. Tell me how much yelling and screaming or abusing, and not, not that conversation, but how much crap can we expect an employee to take? Or how much, um, you know, pick at every single thing to the point that an employee feels like they have to have witnesses to a phone call, or that every single thing has to be documented? Um, we've talked a lot about lies here tonight. I know that the last year that I worked with him, I've gotten, and, and we used to do this with customers too, but, um, I do a lot by email, and, and I know you guys, you know, probably get tired of my little things on email, but I want everything I say to be public record. Here's where I stand on this, it's not a secret, public record. And I've learned that he does the same thing, and then he prints the emails and he gives them to us, so if he's intentionally telling a lie and dumb enough to put it in public record and put it out there for us and, and give it to us to read, um, I, I I guess I, I have a hard time to believe that. So Dan, I, I, I feel like there's personal issues between the two of you, there's been personal issues. This whole parking lot thing is a family thing, you, you're, you're very angry. I don't find it hard to believe that you're very boisterous and you, you talk, and I don't find it hard to believe that he might have felt attacked when you called, because you and I are friends, and I, sometimes I feel like that with you. So, for me, I'm just saying to you that I think a verbal warning is fine. I already gave him one as far as I'm concerned. If everyone else gives him one, I'm happy with that. I will not vote to put something in the file, I guess.
I vote to give him a raise. Ten thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
We have a motion, we've had discussion.
Why are we so bad about what I'm saying? We've had this conversation already, you know?
No, I, I, I make a motion to give the town manager a ten thousand dollar raise.
Mr. Daigle, we have a motion, and we have discussed it. Anybody in favor of discipline, of putting a disciplinary, um, letter in his file? Please raise your hand. Opposed?
But it should be a verbal.
I think a verbal warning has been discussed between him and I, and I'm sure that Laurie has discussed this with him. If you wanna put something in the file.
Well, you, you gave him one specifically.
I, I, no, I said, no, I'm acceptable. I, no matter how upset you get, you're a public employee, you gotta take your blame for the weather. I know, I've been there. And I know it's hard, but never, ever hang up on anyone, whether it's a board member, a taxpayer, anybody. It's just, you just don't do that. It's just, you have to really restrain, say, I'm sorry, this conversation's going nowhere. I'll address it later, and then goodbye. I get it, I get, and get a motion.
I have one further thing, Mr., oh, excuse me.
Sorry, okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, you had asked me to push this out to, uh, other business. We did mention a while ago, the, uh, form of government that we're under. Board of Selectmen Manager. If you study the diagram that's in the MMA manual, you will see that the board of selectmen is at the apex of the pyramid. Uh, I have been denied as an elected officer uh, to attend a board of appeals meeting. If you look at the pyramid, every committee, every board, every subcommittee, all the way down to the individual department heads, fall under the administration of the board of selectmen. The town manager answers to the board of selectmen. And I am looking to this board by a show of hands to reverse this decision that a town selectman cannot sit in on a board of appeals meeting. And the reason I want to sit in on that board of appeals meeting is because the information that I have gathered thus far, uh, I feel and based on my studies of the code book for the town of Madawaska, that the town is in error. But that will not be for me, up, up to me to prove. Uh, that will be at the board of appeals meeting on Thursday night. And the gentleman that is bringing this forth is, uh, extremely well-informed. Now ultimately, if the board of appeals cannot come to a, a consensus or a decision that will be favorable for the appellant, because as of right now, the gentleman has filed an administrative appeal and is prepared to challenge the town of Madawaska. Uh, therefore, at that point, this comes back by, by procedure, if you will, according to the code book. This comes back to the board of selectmen. Therefore, as an elected official being I don't know, what's the word? I don't wanna use the word above.
I don't know.
But in the pyramid, the board of selectmen is above, if you will, in the diagram, is above the board of appeals and the planning board. Therefore, the board of selectmen have full authorization to attend silently a board of appeals meeting, planning board meeting, and observing safety protocol with this COVID nonsense. So by a show of hands, I want this board to reverse
Wait, Mr. Daigle, Mr. Daigle.
Mr. Daigle, could you please put your mask on?
You know, uh, you know, Mr. Daigle, why did you not bring this up when, when the time was, was You know, uh, you know, Mister Deagle, why did you not bring this up when when the time was 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 available to you? You know, we have, we have articles there for the board to address, for members of the board to address the board. If you had other business, why didn't you just bring it up?
You asked me to put it to other business.
Yes, and I'm saying right now, why didn't you bring it up?
I just did.
Other business has gone by.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, anyway, this board is not, your face was.
So I can't, I I can't accept the decision. I cannot accept that, I cannot accept a motion of this.
Well, well, you cannot accept that, Mister Chairman. You fail your duties and you cannot, you have no authorization and I wanna know if it came from that little boy over there or if that came from you.
Go ahead.
To his defense during other part, other business, he did mention he had another item he wanted to bring up.
I did.
And we kinda pushed it off.
I did, but.
Uh, I'm not trying to be a.
No, no.
I'm not more than.
You're you're stating the facts. So you mean, so 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 at this point, you're, you're saying that 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 that
But we don't like it because Danny is saying.
That I missed his request?
Yes, because you did.
I I I don't wanna say you missed it, but he did bring up that he had another item, I don't know if I was the one who heard that, but I thought he said he had another item.
Well, you know, I mean, we did bring up other businesses under 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 that that particular article. Did we not bring up those those other issues that you were talking about?
I told you right at the beginning of the meeting that I had several and I still have three that I haven't taken up, but I'm not gonna hold these people up any longer. Uh, but but before this meeting on on Thursday night, uh, first of all, you have, I I wanna know which one of you, I wanna know which one of you was was trying to to bar a selectman from attending the Board of Appeals meeting on Thursday night. Which one of you do? Which one?
There, there, I can answer that because actually they emailed us and they asked us and I think it was a consensus that we believe
Okay, go ahead.
as a Board of Selectmen, we are only in our official capacities during an official board meeting. And 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 don't, don't, don't.
I am not familiar with the company as a selectman.
No, I understand.
But I am, but silently, silently.
But let me finish, let me, let me finish. I'm not, I'm not discrediting what you're saying, I'm just saying, this is my understanding of it. So therefore, outside of a Board of Select meeting, we're just Joe individual, Joe on the street.
We are, well.
So it's up to the Board of Appeals whether or not they wanna allow a Danny Deagle who's not a selectman because he's very direct.
No, no. You're incorrect.
Right, let me, this is my opinion here, I'm not giving you facts, I'm giving my opinion.
Okay.
And it was discussed, they didn't tell us, say, hey, do you want it, they said, what do you guys think? And that, the consensus was, we don't think we have the ability to say yes or no, Danny can go. So nobody made the decision to say, Dan, you can't go. It was under our, my understanding that I can't give Dan permission or not permission. I believe it has to be the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals to allow me to come in. So that's just my understanding of it, so nobody said, no, Dan can't go.
May 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 I, may I, so we sort of followed the with the Board of Appeals meeting, the same protocol for how the meetings are. We posted an agenda, okay, and and these protocols were, the board agreed to do this. We've taken public comments in writing to the town manager by noon today. People could, we're gonna stream that meeting for people to watch. Okay, it's already set up. Okay, this board has agreed with this the this method. Okay, so when the request came from Dan to me by private message, it wasn't up for me to decide. And I forwarded it to you guys and I said, please advise how you want to handle his request. I do not have the authority. I do not have the authority to do so, it's not me, it it comes from this board. Okay, so I I did not try to dissuade or pursue, you know, no, not to ask any of these board members, if I tried to influence any of them for you not to be there, it didn't happen.
You have no right.
I, I, I didn't do it, I forwarded your message to all of the other board members and I asked them to please decide it, because it's up to them, not up to me.
Well, then, go ahead, Lori.
Well, I hope you remember, but you and I had a conversation and at first I was like, I don't understand why you couldn't be there. Um, and I have that, if you, I was like, at first I said, I don't know why you couldn't be there, so I don't have a problem with it. And then after, you're the one who actually sent the um, the rules, like people in the public cannot go. And so then my question became, well, okay, is Dan public or is he board member? And then I think I sent you a screenshot of my answer to this whole thing. Because like I said, I have to make everything record.
I don't remember.
Um, my opinion was that just because we are selectmen, if we are not allowing the public to enter a meeting, then we don't deserve special privileges to go to a meeting, that was my opinion.
No. It's in the administrative, it's in the administrative pyramid.
Well. You know.
You can't argue that, it's in the M, excuse me.
So it's. Okay.
The MMA manual is very explicit on the order of command, they call it. All the way down the chain, okay? So.
But you would be considered public at that point in that meeting.
No, no, you're not considered public, you are, throughout the MMA manual, they stress that you are an elected official. Check it out. And I feel sorry for the person who's gonna try to bar me from being at that meeting on Thursday night. Give it your best shot, little boy.
So let me just.
I'm not the one, listen, I'm not the one who's trying, it's this board's decision.
Let let me address that. In black, in black and white, in black and white, and this is public record. So referencing the Board of Appeals meeting, the towns' public buildings are close to the public. The members allowed to this meeting are the landowners and the Board of Appeal members. Selectman Deagle wants to attend, this is a board decision, please share your thoughts. There's noers in there, he says, you guys should not allow Dan, he he left it up to us and our response was basically, we, I don't know if we have the right to do that, I don't see.
You can't bar me.
We didn't bar you, we don't, we don't know if we have the right.
I I was told that I cannot attend.
Well.
Okay, I was told that I cannot attend.
Okay.
That is false and it's time that some of you little boys here open the covers of this book. Doug Shue, you can shake your head all you want and laugh at me, but you're paid double what these people are paid here, you're paid four thousand dollars a year and you have never once opened the pages of this book, you haven't, and your demonstration of it is obvious.
So can we, can we bring, can we bring this back around?
So I guess I'm paid double. Yep.
Okay, can't we just, how many people are really gonna go to that meeting? Can't we just open it to the, no, 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 I mean, like, can't we just open it to the public, it's gonna be here, there's room, I mean, do you foresee fifty people coming?
I will. I will.
Can we just not?
No, we're all under lockdown, we're under lockdown.
We're picking and choosing which meetings we allow people to come to and that's gonna just open a can of worms. You know what happens if forty-nine people show up and the fiftieth person, we gotta turn around? I mean, it's, you're really asking for trouble if you start doing that.
That's not gonna happen with the Board of Appeal meeting. Really, I mean.
We're up to our elbows in the taxpayers' wallets with taxes and they don't even come to the annual meeting, you think they're gonna come to a Board of Appeals meeting?
It's it's streamed to live dot com, it's not Zoom.
It's not Zoom.
Yeah.
Cause at least there you're able to actually participate, I mean, vote.
I will be there present in person. Let the record show, Danny Deagle will be at the Board of Appeals meeting on Thursday night in person as a selectman.
Um, again, this is, this is again off the beaten path here, we're away from the articles that we've been discussing. It looks like nobody's gonna stop you from what you're attempting to do, so.
You better not.
Do what you, what you gotta do. None of us have agreed nor disagreed.
You would never agree with anything that I would state, never, you never have, you never will.
You know, Mister Deagle, I have searched out your opinions and your thoughts almost at every turn and you have never, never responded, you have never accepted my calls, you have never met with me. I met up with you in a in a parking lot to talk to you, you refused to talk to me. I've asked other board members to talk to you on 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 my behalf and you never responded.
It's funny that I was engaged in a conversation in a parking lot that you're talking about and as the chairman of the board, that you chose to violate the MMA MMA statute to come and to butt your nose into a conversation that I was having with another selectman where the MMA handbook
You know, Mister Deagle, I was, I was reaching out to you, I was personally reaching out to you.
You have no legal right, if we're not holding minutes, you have no legal right to come butt into a conversation.
Fine, Mister Deagle, fine, fine, I understand, I understand.
You understand, but are you wrong? You'll never say you're wrong, you'll never say.
It was that my intent? Was what, my intent, what was my intent there?
Ten to not.
Was I, was I, was I really, was I really interfering?
As for four thousand dollars a year, for four thousand dollars a year, you should know that you can't have three selectmen
Mister Deagle. Mister Deagle.
Involve in a conversation without holding minutes, that's what the law says.
It was only, it was only that I wanted to, to directly ask you, I wanna ask you.
Oh, I wanna sit down, I wanna sit with Lori and Jason for coffee and talk about all kinds of stuff, but no, yeah, no, that's.
So why didn't you ask me to go meet you somewhere then?
I didn't ask you to go, I didn't ask you to come to my, to come to that conversation.
You, why didn't you ask me to go meet you someplace else?
Cause I don't wanna meet you.
There you go. There you go.
Very simple.
Okay, all right. Do you don't have any action on on what we're discussing here to me? There was no uh, no motion here that we're doing yet. Okay, so now we're moving on to article, I think we have one more to cover. Article twelve, um, update on the offer for the purchased restaurant equipment of the former Orchids Restaurant. Assets held by the town of Madawaska's U-DAG program.
So, just an update, uh, we haven't offered initially uh, the ten thousand dollars for the equipment at at the Orchids facility, uh, that offer has been rescinded. Uh, and the person making the offer had, uh, through a phone call uh, stated that they were of the opinion that the fixtures were to remain with with the with the building. And and so, that would mean some of the larger items, like the heat pump system, there's a, there's a heat pump system, I think, believe four, four units uh, throughout the building. Uh, there's the uh, fire suppression system, there's the exhaust hood, there's a lot of things that are attached to that, that you could consider a fixture. The purchase and sale agreement with North State, I haven't seen it, but I talked to the person that, the North State who's handling this this transaction, if you will, is informing that their description of the purchase and sale agreement says building, it doesn't talk about contents. It's 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 absent language on on that, but that they, that they are of the opinion in the past, based on their own transactions, that items that are attached are typically considered fixtures, okay? And and I don't disagree with that. However, we, as a town, through our U-DAG program, have leads, we have security agreements on that equipment, okay? And and all of it, and we have actual invoices and and an asset listing that the prior owner signed up on in the bill of sale from the bankruptcy. And our and our attorney was part of that process through the bankruptcy, so we have uh, an opinion of our attorney that basically says it could be argued that that stuff is ours because we have a financing statement, support and documentation, support that that is, that equipment is ours and it is up to us to take it out if we want to. And that the buyer, right now, I believe in his opinion was that, didn't have a say in the matter at this point because it it's belongs to North State, okay? So, still, I think the closing is February eleven, scheduled to be around February eleven. So, I just want the board to have, uh, again, uh, let's talk again about the situation. There's, uh, we have a forty-three thousand dollar balance, I believe, on that U-DAG loan. We're never gonna be made whole. There is roughly, I don't have the information, but it's in your prior agenda packet. Forty-some-odd thousand dollars of equipment value there, okay, depreciated. Uh, or, there's a, there's a listing for what that stuff is worth new and what it's worth depreciated. I have NMDC who does, who administers our U-DAG program, Julie Corey specifically, uh, has expressed to me in the past, uh, they do a lot of lending at NMDC. They have a lot of experience with these kinds of things, especially restaurants, where uh, towns are lucky, they are, we would be lucky to get ten cents on the dollar, okay? Uh, because of the nature of it all. And so, when we were given an offer for ten thousand dollars, I think it was a good offer, we were, uh, we split, but the board accepted that offer and and now that offer's been rescinded and and now we have to make a decision. What do we wanna do with the equipment? Do we wanna put it out to bid? Uh, do, we want solicit offers, do we wanna counter negotiate with with the person who made an offer? Uh, do we wanna enter a more discussion with North State, I don't think they have, you know, I think you're trying to be neutral in this as much as they can. In in any case, uh, the town's gonna be left uh, with a loss, with a financial loss to the, to the U-DAG program. To the, to the extent, I don't know what it's gonna be, it's gonna depend if we can retrieve, if we can recover some, some of that, okay? If we have to go there and remove the contents, uh, we have to consider who's who's gonna do the, who's gonna do all that? Um, is it going to be uh, our own staff? Uh, do we have the expertise or do we have the time to to go there and disassemble the heating unit system? Uh, and a fire suppression system and all of that stuff and where are we gonna put it? Actually, uh, now that I think about it, we got an offer, uh, there was a moving company that was aware of the situation and they extended us an offer and said, hey, listen, if you guys need somebody to move that and store that for for us, for you, give us a call, we'll we'll do, we'll do you a great service. So, you have a decision in front of you where either we go back out to bid, see what we can get, we can try to, we can try to renegotiate with uh, with uh, the previous uh, offer, first and make the previous offer. Uh, or we could take it, take it out, uh, based on the legal opinion that we have. I I do think that, based on the expertise provided to me by Julie Corey at NDC, that if we are to remove a fixture that we feel is ours, that leaves a hole in the wall, conceivably with the heat pump system, there's pipes and things, you know? That we would have to fix that hole in the wall. So, there's gonna be some costs associated with removing that equipment. Manpower, storage, repairs to the building, that we might, you know, subsequent, as a, as a result of us taking that that equipment out. So, it's not an easy situation, uh, I want you to have all the information, uh, I wanna get you all the information as possible to for you guys to make a difficult decision, unfortunately, uh, what what do we, what are we to do?
Shall we make some kind of motion before we discuss or, that's what you're doing, Dan?
Yep. Yep, you need a motion?
Are you making a motion, do we can discuss it or?
No. Uh, well.
I need a motion first.
Alright, you motion?
A motion, yes.
You motion there.
Alright, I'll make a motion, I make a motion that we remove the equipment from the building and try to auction it off.
I'll, I'll second that for the purpose of a discussion.
And so, what else can we have for discussion? Yep, go ahead, Dan.
Once again, radical Dan here, I just have a problem. When I saw the agenda and this came back on the agenda, I I thought to myself that we had already taken care of this in the last meeting. I I just, I.
We gave her she rescinded her offer.
Yep, yes, but but in speaking with her, uh, I said, good morning, madam, you're scribbling some numbers down. How many houses did you and Bob build in Madawaska? And she wrote back twenty-eight, okay? So if you do the math, it's three million dollars that this lady has spent in Madawaska, okay? Mister Pekard is talking to us here about the possibility of negotiating with Linda. We gotta be careful because Danny lies. She says they are tight-lipped and Gary won't even talk to me anymore, well. That's all I have.
Are are you making a point there?
Yes.
What did he just tell you? He just told you that he cannot make this decision, he cannot advise her, he's bringing it to us. Yes, that's what he's doing.
But this lady is trying to reach out to this man who is supposed to be gathering information and bringing it to this board and he won't even talk to this lady.
So do you have that, do you, do you go, do you have that information? Is there more information here that we should know about?
And this is going on, and this goes on. You won't listen to anything I say?
I'm listening, give it to me.
Listen, look, all of this, I got a week's work in here and you didn't listen to a single word of it. Not, so why should I continue? This is false, but.
Alright, Dan, we're back, we're back to the board here, I mean.
Okay, all yours.
Dan, is there any other discussion?
So, I would at least like to see, I mean, and and one of the things that I had talked about during the original man, meeting was, hey, you know, we've got a list of these. hey, you know, we've got a list of these things, aren't, I mean, aren't they ours? But Gary did talk to me about holes in the walls and things like that. I think it might be a, a good idea to say, let's contact one of the local, you know, plumbing companies or, or, or heat pump installation companies and say, hey, listen, what do you think this heat pump is worth? Are you willing to give us a thousand dollars for the heat pump system? You go in there, you take it out, you patch up the holes, is it worth a thousand dollars to you? We make a thousand dollars instead of nothing. We do the same thing with the fire suppression system. We call the company, the local company who sells these systems, I mean, it's, it's still a good system, they go for our money, say, hey, you remove the system, you take it yourselves, what would you offer the town for that system? You plug up the holes, make it look good, if they come back and say zero, we leave it there. If they come back and say, we'll give you two thousand dollars for the, for a ten thousand dollar, you know, fire suppression system, well, that's two thousand dollars instead of zero. And then we take all, all the other small items, all the small things, and we either do, hey, five thousand dollar minimum, we put it in, we, you know, we put it down, that's just an idea. But I would at least like to see us make an effort rather than just saying, nah, it's a loss, you know? And if we can, if we call heating companies and none respond, fine, leave it there, at least we tried. And you know what I mean? If they come back and say, all I, all it's worth is five hundred bucks, well, then we'll have to look at that and say, yeah, hey, it's five hundred bucks compared to nothing. I, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, let's make an effort to see what, you know, how much we can recover.
Anybody else?
Nope, I don't know, I don't have an idea.
It's tough.
You know, um, I just, my.
Unless, Dan, Dan already checked out, or does she wanna talk to you, or like, do you have an idea? Does she wanna talk to you?
My, uh.
No, 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 no. Danny is disconnected from this board, you, you people drew the line tonight, that's all right, carry on, do your thing. Let me know when it's over.
I wonder, um, I wonder if we would go back to the, the, the new owners, as, as we can call them, and, and ask them if they would put out a, a dollar amount for that equipment without having to go through any kind of, any kind of issue of pulling stuff out and patching holes. I mean, I, I, I think Jason's thoughts are, are, are very prudent and he's looking out for the taxpayers. I, at this point, would like to negotiate with the owners, the new owners, and say, you know, your first offer, I think, is something the board could have accepted, is this, can you, can you, can you put that offer on the table again and we'll just call it good?
I'm, I'm okay with that, I think I would, I would like to see if I could have a, a board member or two be part of that discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, I made myself available for that discussion.
Laurie's available?
I mean, I'm open to, I'm open to offering her a different price and that, but I, I just don't wanna.
I don't know, no. Not a good negotiator, Dan.
I am.
Get it away to somebody and, and get.
I am.
All right. So, 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 uh, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion on, do we have a motion on the floor?
You have to change it.
Well, I mean, you, you, yeah, I think you, if we, we change the motion.
Change that. I mean, I don't even know if you need the motion, we're just gonna, we, we, we've talked about what we think we're gonna do and.
Yeah.
I, I would certainly appreciate having a couple of board members.
Their closing is what?
Uh, projected to be the February eleven.
And so, and so, uh.
And, and they've indicated that, uh, they would work with us, you know, if you wanted to take the contents out. That they could, you know, it could be later, till later on this spring, you know, cause they're not around. But that the fixtures, they feel that need to remain, so. That, I guess, you know, that's, that's the thing there that. I think we're having two different conversations here, right? We having one about.
That's normal.
Trying to, trying to recover whatever we can. But then, but also the, the situation where there's, there's difference of opinion as to the fixtures, who's, who, who is a rightful owners of the fixtures? Right now, the rightful owner of the fixtures is the estate and, and not the buyer.
Almost time to get up.
And, and, and if, if we wait till after the closing, the rightful owner of the building will be, the people that are buying it.
Right.
Okay, and so, you have that window there that, you know, if you take the contents out now, um, that you feel that are ours. And, and I think that it would be worthy of, of due diligence for a board member or two to sit in on another conversation with the attorney to say, do, do you really think that we, we have a good secure position? His emails indicate that on it. Uh, that would give you guys a legal, a good, a good informed decision whether or not we could go in and take the fixtures out as well.
Right.
Okay, but it's, it's, it's either before February eleven and, and if there's a, i- if there's a, a dispute about, about that, it's with, it's with North State.
Right.
Not, not the buyer, but if it's after February eleven, if that is indeed the day that they do close, then we have an issue with the buyers.
So this moving company, you said they're willing to work with us on that, is there a major cost to that, or is that something?
I haven't given any, any, uh, it came in a letter.
Okay.
And, and they took two biggest cards and were actually the, the, the company that moved, uh, uh, the, the residents from Vital Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I definitely think it's something we should discuss, whether it's negotiations with the new buyer or talking with the attorney about what a fix, you know, what to be about the fixture.
So we're gonna proceed with the, with the thought that we are going to have a discussion first with the, with the.
Well, I think we're gonna have to a discussion with North State.
Yep.
Cause those, those, those are the people that own the building, the building right now.
Right.
Um, if, if the goal is to take the contents out before February eleven. And, and this is just my thought, uh, and then afterwards, the conversation is with the buyers, the eventual owners of the building, so. I, I would certainly like to have a board member or two, uh, be part of those conversations.
Are there any other board members interested in, in joining here?
Laurie is.
No, no, I don't know anything about Cheet Rock and you can be sarcastic all night, Dan, I love you anyway.
Dan, are you interested, are you, are you interested in?
Yeah, I'm. Not interested in anything anymore, Jason.
Well.
Are you?
I, I would be, yeah, but I, I mean, is the rest of the board accepting to doing that as, as a staff?
That, that is the, uh, the thing.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it, so I don't know what we have to do with the motion that's on the table there, but.
Now, now, what, can you read the motion?
Please, Jason, motions removed and go to auction and Laurie, for instance, go to discussion.
So, so I, I can amend my motion to.
Please.
Uh, further the discussions with North State and our attorney about the issue with what is, isn't a fixture and what our next steps could be with those fixtures.
I'll second, I'll, I accept that, change.
One, second. Are we all in favor? Opposed? Very good. You know, I don't, I don't know how a discussion like this will work personally with North State. I'd rather see, uh, cause they're just gonna say, if it's yours, it's yours, go do what you gotta do. I, I don't, I don't really care to go that route, I'd rather end up having a discussion with, with the owners and try to work something out so that it's amicable with everybody.
See, it, it leads us into the ability where if, if the lawyer and North State all agree that, yes, we can remove the fixtures, we can go to the owner and say, listen, we're willing to work with you.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? We've identified, we can take the fixtures out, we're willing to if we have to, but, hey, you know, work with us, you wanna buy it for this amount of money, you know? I'm not saying let's throw that whole idea out, but you know, just saying this kinda gives us an idea of, of like, you know.
I, 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 I just think it, 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 it should carry itself through beyond, beyond discussing this with North State.
Right.
And I, and I think that this board would have done their due diligence on this matter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking, I mean, just, yeah.
Very good. All right.
Mister Chair, Article thirteen, uh, is my manager's report, you all have it.
Yeah.
Do you need, do you need for me to read it out loud?
I've already read it.
Okay.
No, I'd like to hear it out loud.
Let the board decide then.
I make a motion that we table, or we, uh, don't read the manager, manager's report out loud. I was gonna say table, but I don't want to.
Don't table it.
I make motion that we adjourn.
Well, let's, let's accept the, the motion.
I mean, a motion of adjournment, it's the same thing, really.
That we do not.
He was kidding. Were you kidding? I thought you were kidding.
No, I'm making a motion not to have to read it out loud.
Do we really don't need that?
I have a motion on the floor, Mister Chairman.
Yes, I need a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Yep, all in favor of not reading it? We will read it out loud?
Opposed.
Sorry, opposed, thank you.
You gotta follow the rules, remember?
I'm sorry, Mister Dagle.
You gotta follow the rules, remember?
Yes, it is, uh, kind of correct, I know.
I'll, I'll second, who did someone second?
I'll second.
All in favor of adjournment? Opposed? I know it didn't bounce out.
And Dan is, Dan is opposed to adjourned and I. I'm not, Gary, I will find that stuff another time.
Yeah, you know what, guys, go, go home, I'll have the, uh.
Oh, let's turn it off the camera.
Yeah, so just, get your door and call, like, just. Yeah, just, just not.
Um, so I'll come back.